Now, called to order our regularly scheduled meeting for July 28th, 2020. And before we have a moment of silent prayer, I just ask people to keep the families of Lieutenant Richard Thompson, who served with Fire Department, and Alan Slagel, who retired from the Sheriff's Department, did a lot of other things for our community, just keep those families in your prayers, and we'll take a moment of silence.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see, Mayor's Minute, Council comments. I guess I will start, and have and probably will for, it seems like the foreseeable future. Of course, City Manager may add more to this, but as you know, there's been cases, people testing positive for COVID within the Police Department. I'd also ask you to keep those officers and their families in your prayers. But just to remind people to please take precautions, to wear face covering if you're indoors, or you can't social distance, if you can, to social distance, to wash your hands. We want to see our community first and foremost be safe and healthy, but we also want to see businesses remain open, and hopefully, in a few weeks, our children return to schools. So, these are some of the things that we can do as a community to help make that happen. So, again, I would encourage people to do that as much as possible. Any comments? City Manager?
Sure, I'll just make a few comments in regards to COVID-19 and our officers. You know, that has been a topic of discussion in the local media and throughout the community. We do have seven police officers and one dispatcher that have tested positive for COVID-19 since July the 16th. And I believe every one of those has shown symptoms except one. One has been asymptomatic. All of them have had, lost their sense of taste and smell. And the overall type of symptoms, I believe, people would describe it as a really bad sinus infection. Now, unfortunately, not everybody just gets a really bad sinus infection, and it goes away after a few days. Other people suffer more dire consequences of COVID-19. Fortunately, tonight, we do have Dr. Karen Shelton here to share a little more information about COVID-19 and how it's affecting our community specifically. And I think she'll be able to answer a lot of questions. I know over the past four months, COVID-19 has become politically charged as to whether or not the numbers are accurate, and if the disease is really manifesting itself the way that some of the media portrays it. What I can tell you is, prior to July 16th, the city was not, had not been impacted at the employee level. But now, we do have employees who have been impacted by it, their families have been impacted by it. So it is a disease that we have to take seriously, and we have to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, not only to protect ourselves, but to protect our friends and families during this time. We have to understand that scientists from across the world are doing their very best, 24/7, to come up with a vaccine for this virus. And hopefully, we'll have a vaccine sooner rather than later. So, later tonight, you'll hear from Dr. Shelton, and she'll be able to update you, everyone, a little bit better.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Item number C, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. I don't believe anyone had signed up to speak, although if anyone is willing, come forward this morning.
May I change my mind and just say something that I wanted to say, but I haven't? But since there's no one, may I speak?
Yes, yep, you can go ahead and speak.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I do pay my tax. I had not planned to say anything tonight, but I'm going to anyway. You all have, some of you all have heard me say many, many times, that the main purpose of a city is for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. And I have had some recent things happen in my life that have caused me problems and a little bit of trouble, and I needed to call on some of these departments for some help. And I want to tell you something, I've never in all of my life seen nicer people who can do their job better, kinder than the people I have dealt with in the City of Bristol, Virginia. And I think you should know this, yes, I get mad, I snort and storm and carry on, but with it all, I have found that when the chips are down, and the citizens need some extra help, that the human element is there. And in my opinion, if I ever again get into problems and some situations like I'm trying to get out of right now, this is where I want to be. We have absolutely got some of the nicest people, police, fire, Public Works, BVU, they're not part of the city, but they are in the city. They are our city. And people who work within the city structure and so forth, I have found them to be great help, and they have certainly been kind to me. It's just like a friend of mine said on the phone, "Well, you know, Nancy, you spent all those years going down there helping out all of the departments and the employees, and helping them along the way, and now you're getting it back." Well, I'm getting it back big time. Thank you, gentlemen, for what we have. They are just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie, for those kind words. And as you say, you know, it's a good time, I think, I've seen lots of examples of neighbor helping neighbor, and then staff, and I think it's a time that we could all extend a little extra love, grace, and mercy to our fellow neighbors right now. So, thank you for that. Okay, anybody else? All right, item D, adoption of the agenda. It's the pleasure of council.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Lum Power.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number one, public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the City of Bristol near the Commonwealth Center. So, I will go ahead and call the public hearing open, and we'll have the staff report.
This is where Planet Fitness is, and really what they wanted to do is, we had the right-of-way that extended down into their property a little further, probably than it needed to be when we did the Lee Highway widening, and so, they wanted to move, shift some things around, and so, we really didn't need it, so we felt like it worked well for them. So that's what this is really about, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about specifics on it.
Oh, this is, this is item number two.
Okay.
Sorry, we need to do the other one on Commonwealth.
Yes.
So, this one, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Lindy Alley, which basically is a grass area, there's no pavement in that area, it's surrounded. The property owner is the same person that surrounds the entire piece, and so, it serves no benefit to the city. He wanted to vacate the right-of-way, and that's why we're asking to vacate it. It makes sense to let him take it back, so.
Okay. All right, so, we had staff report. No one signed up, but is there anyone wants to have a public comment? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move to item number two, which is the public hearing regarding an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the City of Bristol near Planet Fitness. And I'll go ahead and open that public hearing, and we'll once again hear the staff report, Mr. McCullough.
All right, so, it really is, there was right-of-way, excess right-of-way when we did Lee Highway Phase Two. It was really not necessary for that parcel. It would benefit them more than it does us, so we decided we would vacate that piece of it.
Okay. Again, no one's signed up for public comment, but should anyone want to? All right, hearing no public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for that, and we'll move to item number three, a second public hearing for the 2020 HUD Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and the 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll have the staff report.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Ellen Tolton, I'm the CDBG Coordinator for the city. Annually, the City of Bristol, Virginia is a recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This money is awarded without competition to entitlement cities across the nation. Bristol, Virginia is one of these entitlement cities. HUD provides this entitlement amount based on a nationwide dual formula, which uses several objective measures of community needs, including the extent of poverty, population, housing overcrowding, age of housing, and population growth lag in relationship to other metropolitan areas. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons. All entitlement monies received are dispersed through the city's CDBG program. This year, the city had to complete its five-year CDBG consolidated plan to inform the city's goals and objectives for CDBG funding during the next five years, in addition to outlining its 2020 Annual Action Plan. So, we're basically looking at two different things this year. We're looking at the five-year consolidated plan and the 2020 Annual Action Plan, which we do every year. Okay, last fall, the city used an online survey tool for a community assessment, all of which was used to advise its five-year consolidated plan. The survey received 260 responses, all of which informed the next five years' needs and goals. The goals and objectives for the next five years for the CDBG program have not changed significantly from the previous five years. The goals for the five-year consolidated plan have been informed by the following priorities: housing rehabilitation, support for public service agencies, homeless services, affordable housing, economic development, and public improvements and infrastructure. The goals and associated activities supporting these priorities include housing rehabilitation, public infrastructure, which includes sidewalks and ADA accessibility, public service agency support, neighborhood revitalization, this includes blight removal, or better known as demo, economic development, and code enforcement. One element that is more clearly defined and updated in the plan this year is an increased number of census tracts that contain more than 50% low to mod-income families. This opens up more eligible areas and tracts for sidewalks, ADA accessibility, public improvements, that type of thing. Geographic areas prioritized for the next five years include the following, and they're up on the board. We have more census tract block groups with greater than 50% LMI, areas surrounding public housing units, low to moderate income households, downtown district, the enterprise zone, and more newly, the opportunity zones. Okay, we just kind of covered the goals for the five-year plan. I'm going to switch now to go over the annual action plan for this year. The city's CDBG annual entitlement amount for 2020 announced by HUD is $270,304, which is a 5% increase from last year, and we also received $70,000, I believe it's $75,814 in home funds. Home funds are used for housing reconstruction and first-time homebuyer assistance in reconstruction for LMI families. As you all probably remember, with our allocation, there is a 20% cap that can be used for administration, and a 15% cap that can be used for public service agencies. The remainder of the monies can be used for citywide projects. So, for this year, based on the $270,000 plus that we received, we can use $54,060 for administration, we can use $40,545 for public service agencies, and this is through a competitive application process. And then, the remainder is $175,699, which is a balance that can be allocated to activities meeting need priorities and goals as determined by the annual action plan. Okay, you'll see up here the public service allocations. These were done by the competitive application process. The process for receiving, managing, and dispersing CDBG monies is governed by both HUD and city policy. The first step in this process is advertising the announcement of public service funding availability. Concurrent with this announcement, applications are sent to past funding recipients as well as likely candidates for public service funding. Following receipt of the completed applications, the CDBG coordinator categorizes each request within the HUD funding categories. A selection committee then reviews the applications, scoring them based on the criteria for which the city is graded by HUD. The recommendations for funding are reviewed by city council at a public hearing before being remanded to a subcommittee established by the mayor. The mayor's subcommittee reviews the applications and prepares the final allocation plan, which is announced at a public meeting of the city council, which is tonight. So, the public service allocations are listed on the PowerPoint that you see. We do continue to try to include all eligible agencies in Bristol that provide critical services. With each application, of course, that means that we can allocate a whole lot of money to any one particular one, but we feel at this time it's more important to at least recognize and give them what we can. So, the remainder of the funds, after admin and the public service, this is the remaining balance and the allocations that staff has approved for recommending our emergency housing rehabilitation, $40,000. This remains one of our most popular and in-demand programs. I've already got a waiting list of at least 10 homes right now, so we have very limited money for that. For sidewalk improvements and ADA accessibility, we're allocating $55,699. Demolition, $20,000. Code enforcement, $20,000. Economic development has carryover, and so, we're not going to award any new funds for that. The same with housing maintenance partnership program, that has carryover. A new project we have this year is for an elevator upgrade, it's for Virginia Middle School, and that was through a public facilities improvement application. They requested $40,000. This past year, we used CDBG funds for Stonewall Jackson to upgrade their elevator. Okay, additionally, the city is receiving $75,817 in home funding. $50,817 will be used for reconstruction, and $25,000 for first-time homebuyer downpayment assistance. And the HUD funds are administered through the First Tennessee Development District. It's on behalf of the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium, and this is used for low-income owner occupied housing rehab and first-time homebuyer assistance. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Marnie, you can go ahead, it's a public hearing, so you can make a comment if you want. If you want to step up.
May I come up?
Yeah, yeah. It's a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I have concerns here, and I have voiced these concerns a time or two through the years, and I feel very strongly about what I think. Bristol, Virginia tends to perpetuate the very things that we need to get away from, and we just keep on doing it, and doing it over and over again. Rather than identifying the positive things we have in the community, for the people who live here, or the people we try to attract, we just keep perpetuating the trouble we're trying to get away from. Now, one of these issues is too much public housing. This has been an issue for many years, and in the state of Virginia, I don't know whether it is still true, but it was for many, many years, I think it still is, that per capita, the City of Bristol, Virginia has more public housing than any other city in the state of Virginia. We're out of balance. We're way out of balance. Now, I've heard the statement made in recent months, "Well, what Bristol needs is more low-income housing." No, it isn't, we need less. If we attract any business, it makes no difference what it is, if we attract any business, and the head of that business, man or woman, makes no difference, wants to move to Bristol, and this is a business where the executive is going to make, let's say, $300,000 a year, that person is not looking for a $50,000 house. Doesn't work that way, folks. Doesn't work that way. And they're not looking for Section 8 housing. It doesn't work that way. And they're not looking for public housing. It doesn't work that way. Why do you think the Virginian was built? I can tell you exactly why it was built. And I can tell you, that's where a lot of Bristol, Virginia's citizens that we so desperately need are now living, right out there at the Virginian. There are reasons why, folks. Now, tomorrow, if I decided, not me, leave that out, if someone came to Bristol and wanted, and was going to open a business, and they were in the high-income level, what are you going to show them? What are you going to show them? Our nice public housing that we're getting ready to repaint and do something? Are you going to show them a Section 8 condo up here in the Lee Garden? And I can talk to that point privately another time. I will not do it publicly. But I know plenty about that, too. The relationship between Section 8 and the Lee Garden Apartments. So does the Police Department. But my point, gentlemen, is this, and I will wrap this up very quickly. My point is this, I think that we should exercise great caution and not continue to perpetuate the very things that have gotten us into all this trouble and we can't get out of. Think of what we have that we should protect, and that what could we offer anybody of $300,000 income? Where would you show them something? Think about it, gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. Anybody else? Nobody signed up for public comment, but do we have any more public comment? Jackie?
Jackie North, in between, won the top of the circle. I was just wondering if the allocations money, is there anything left out, left over from this amount?
No.
So, every time, it's been spent?
It's been spent, it's been allocated.
For 2020?
Yes. Great, it starts to lock first of 2020.
So, going into '21, how much do we start at, or do we know?
We do have carryover, so this year, I want to say we have less than $100,000 carryover, and it could go back from last year or the year before.
When you say carryover, is carryover from 2020?
Isn't it? It's from like last year, and we didn't use it all up.
So, it keeps carrying?
Carryover. And then, this new allocation is additional.
So, it's too late for anyone or anything else to get in there and get what's left?
For this year.
I'll take this.
What, a tissue or next year?
Yeah, it depends on what you're looking for. But see, there's an open, there's an application project or an application process for the public service agencies. The rest is pretty much HUD activities, which is putting in sidewalks, demolishing buildings, home repair, which repairs houses that are owned by residents, if they can afford to, you know, put a heat pump or a roof or that kind of stuff.
So, that's still open?
Yes, ma'am. So, what we're doing, for example, for the home repair program, is we're allocating $40,000, and then what you would do is if you are a homeowner that needs certain eligibility requirements, you apply to me. We have an application process, and you apply for that, yes. This is just, you're just allocated in a certain category.
Yeah. Send it to...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. No, it's a good question, Ms. North. Anybody else have any, any comments? Well, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for the 2020 HUD Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. Move on to item number four, the Health Department presentation. Dr. Shelton?
Good evening, I'm Dr. Shelton, from the Mount Rogers Health District and the Bristol City Health Department. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. I understand you wanted some updates on COVID-19. I'm sorry, do not have any slides prepared for the general audience, but I did present a one-page document to the council, and if you want to put this onto the webpage or whatever, you're welcome to use that. Basically, we wanted to talk about the impact of COVID-19 locally in Bristol, and how that relates to our region, and as well as to the state. The Health Department is tasked, COVID-19 is a reportable disease, so every COVID-19 case that is reported, we do investigate, and we talk with this case, and we go over their symptoms, we go over any of their contacts, people that they may have been around during their contagious period, and then we follow up with those contacts and follow them because they're at high risk for also developing COVID-19. This communicable disease, as Mr. Eads has said, does have, in the majority of cases, mild to moderate illness. Symptoms include headache, runny nose, fever, low-grade fever usually. Actually, more than half of our cases do not even run a fever. People can have abdominal pain, diarrhea, chills, sinus-type symptoms. Someone told me it was like a bad summer cold, so it can have a variety of symptoms, but then it can also have the more severe symptoms. And approximately 10% of our cases have had more severe symptoms and required hospitalization. Throughout the district, we are up to 1,110 cases now. The Mount Rogers Health District covers the City of Bristol, as well as the counties of Washington, Smith, Withbland, Grayson, and Carroll, and the City of Galax. So, we have a wide varied region here as far as the different kinds of things we are following. As a district, with our 1,110 cases, we had a relatively slow start. In April, we had 49 cases, which only represented approximately 4% of our cases, followed by 405 cases in May, which was approximately 36% of our cases. A little slower in June at 245 cases, which was approximately 20%, 2% of cases. And this month thus far, we've had over 405 cases, again, another 36%. In general, how this has looked as a region, we have first saw back in late March travelers kind of coming back from domestic hotspots or international hotspots. This was followed by some community transmission. It then got into our healthcare workers. Healthcare workers, then, we learned about universal precautions regarding wearing face masks and goggles when we're seeing patients. Then we then had some more community transmission, and then a relative lull. For the Mount Rogers Health District, we then had a large number of cases start up in what we call the Twin County area, which was Galax, Carroll, and Grayson, and this has given us a vision of what can... And this has given us a vision of what can happen in a community when this spreads unchecked. In Galax, we had several large families who got infected. The highest-risk things that you'll see from this virus is if you live in the same household as someone who has COVID, you are much more likely to also get COVID yourself, probably greater than four out of five in a household will turn positive for COVID. Also, riding in a car with someone increases your risk quite greatly. And so we think about close contacts as those who are within six feet for more than 15 minutes and neither one wearing masks. That's what creates your closest contact or your highest-risk situation, the people who are most likely to then go on and develop COVID. COVID is a disease spread by respiratory droplets. So when you talk, breathe, sneeze, cough, you spread these droplets out, and that's what goes out into the atmosphere. That is where the face masks come in, because by blocking those droplets, then they decrease the spread. And if the person opposite you also has on a mask, then it does protect them somewhat as well. And two people together then protect each other by wearing masks. We do feel that wearing face masks are a great key to slowing down the transmission of this disease in addition to the social distancing, which you all have great tonight, all the social distancing. We also encourage people to wash their hands very frequently, use hand sanitizer, and most of all, to stay home when they're sick. If people don't feel well, we really want them to be staying home. When it comes to the outcomes of this disease, we have found that those who are elderly have the very poorest outcomes. For those who are greater than 70, and we've had, and it's on your brochure, we've had 185 cases for those over age 70. 35% of all these people were hospitalized, and 19% of all these people died. So we do know that if you're over the age of 70 and you get this disease, you have a very much harder course and more likely a poor outcome, to include death. A little younger, in the 60-year-old range, we had 137 of these cases thus far. 12% were hospitalized, so almost one out of 10 people in their 60s. And thankfully, less than 1% of those died. In the 50s, out of 161 cases, 6% were hospitalized, less than 1% died. And in the broad range of 20 to 49, only 2% of these were hospitalized. So we do, again, see that younger people tend to fare better, and less than 1% of these died. For our pediatric population, 19 and younger, we've had 140 cases, and less than one was hospitalized, and there were no deaths. So the younger people tend to fare better, and the older people tend to fare worse. But we know as a community, we all mix and mingle together, which is why we always all need to have proper precautions and safety of our other community members in mind. Specifically, in going back again to the Twin County area, what we saw was in an unchecked population with large households, people who met frequently together. They did not social distance. They continued to meet frequently together. We had high rates of transmission. This was coupled by the fact that these people worked in many different industries, which meant many businesses became affected. After there was so much community spread in the population, it did spill over into the nursing homes, the long-term care facilities. We had three affected in the Galax and Carroll area that were severely affected that did lead to very poor outcomes. So we do know that if this does spill over into our most vulnerable population, those in our long-term care facilities, we have much more difficult outcomes. So those are some of the lessons learned along the way as far as COVID-19, how it can go. In Bristol, we have thankfully been able to stave it off for quite a long time. We only had about four cases total up until July 1st. We had a few cases between July 1st and July 17th. And between July 17th and today, we've had four, anywhere from three to five cases per day diagnosed in Bristol City. So we know that once it becomes, it gets into a community, it tends to spread. As we look at the effects of our neighboring Tennessee, we know that they have been open more than we have since the middle of May. And we were all wondering and questioning how long it would take Virginia to see the repercussions, or even Tennessee to start to see the repercussions of their opening, and then Virginia to follow suit. It took about six weeks in Tennessee from about mid-May until the end of June, until they really started having increases in cases. And in Sullivan County, the cases have increased rapidly since the end of June and all throughout July. It took us a couple more weeks here in Bristol City than Virginia to see that begin to multiply. So from mid-July on, we have really seen an increase of cases. Washington County's had a slightly different course than Bristol. They had more cases early on. Almost 24% of their cases were back in April. They had several cases related to long-term care as well, healthcare workers as well as travelers. They then slowed down for the months of May and June, but they have really ramped up again in Washington County this month. A lot of the ramping up that we have seen over the last month has to do with people being out and about more. Also, our co-patriots in Tennessee being out and about more. And also, summer travel. Many of these cases that we have had have come from summer vacation, specifically traveled to the beach or other places such as Gatlinburg or other very populated areas where people are not practicing social distancing, they're not wearing face masks, and they're not taking COVID-19 seriously. In these areas, people then have been brought that disease back. They've spread it within their households, their family members, and now into our community. So COVID-19 is very real. There are projections for southwest Virginia. We have generally fared better than the rest of the state when it comes to COVID-19. We generally measure our cases in 10s and 50s, whereas the rest of the state measures their cases in 400s and 500s. So our relative burden of disease has been relatively lower. But our trend over the last month has been very concerningly steep. We are going up. And generally, when it comes to things like flu season, southwest Virginia does lag behind the rest of the state. We do see the northern and eastern regions going up faster for flu season, and then we kind of lag behind. And so the estimates for southwest Virginia do include us peaking sometime in September. So we have not seen the last of this yet. We know that when schools start back, we will have our hands full as well. And we have been talking with the superintendents here in Bristol, Virginia, as well as surrounding counties regarding school planning. We know that when things get shut down, there is great economic impact. So our ask is that while things continue to go on economically, that everybody go about them smarter. I have to say, I was very pleased, I went to the pinnacle on Sunday to do some shopping, and they had somebody at the front of every store that was regulating the number of people that came into their shops. They were giving face masks to those who did not have them. They had clear markers in the store where you could walk. They had hand sanitizer as soon as you walked in the door. And they were taking it very seriously. Sullivan County did put out a mask order. Now, Governor Northam has had out a mask order for months, since the middle of May now. And so these are the things that we need to do as a community to continue to function economically, but also to keep the health and safety of our community members as a top priority. And especially for those who are elderly or medically vulnerable, to present to them options for safe functioning within our community. Let's see if there's any other points to bring out. I guess we can take some questions if there's anything I haven't covered. As far as testing, we do have testing available throughout Bristol. Many primary care providers provide testing. Valid Health does provide testing. The Bristol Health Department and Washington County Health Departments do provide testing as well for those who have need, as well as the urgent cares. So we do have testing available for anyone who is ill, who has been in contact to a case or is concerned that they may have contracted COVID-19.
I have a question for Dr. Shelton, whatever is appropriate.
Any of the council members?
I have a couple of questions. I just wanted to say, Dr. Shelton, thank you for coming and talking to us tonight, spending some time with us. In your opinion, and this could be a rough guess, because we don't really know this number, but the total number of our population in our health district, if you had to guess, like, because you're out and about and you see it, what would you say the percentage of people are that are really taking the mask-wearing seriously? Is there a number that we have?
It is different in different areas. I will tell you, in general, southwest Virginia does not do as well with mask-wearing as other parts of the state. It was very disappointing to me that even as essential businesses were allowed to function, that no one really took this very seriously. Even with the governor's face mask order, no one took it very seriously. Now that we're in phase three and people are out and about, I've been very pleased that certain of our larger stores have taken it seriously and have mandated not only for their employees, but also their customers to be wearing face masks as they come in and shop. And I think that this is a great stride. I am hoping that as people see the numbers go up, they will continue to see the value of wearing the face mask in public. It is the governor's order. I know that as the Virginia Department of Health, we are tasked with enforcement of the face mask. But I will tell you that our priority is case investigation and contact tracing. We are taking care of the spread of communicable disease. There are numerous complaints that come in, and we do respond to those. And so we do go out and talk with restaurants or businesses as appropriate regarding face masks. But we are past the health education phase now, as the governor noted, and people really need to be wearing their face masks. So while there does lie some enforcement regarding the face mask policy, our biggest motivation is still that we hope that citizens will take this seriously and consider their fellow citizen when they go out and about and try to protect their neighbors and their families regarding COVID-19.
Here in the City of Bristol, Virginia, it seemed like throughout the spring and into June, if there was one new case a day, that was, you know, a big deal. Now, you said we're having multiple cases every day. I think we're up to 44 confirmed cases in the city.
Yes.
And you mentioned the peak that we may see here could be in September. Do you have any thoughts or predictions about what that could look like as we approach our peak here?
It's very difficult to know how many cases we'll have here. In the City of Galax, which only has a population of 6,500, they have had 322 cases. Their rate is over 5,000 and puts them in the top 10 in the nation regarding their statistics. Carroll County neighboring has a population of approximately 30,000. They've had just topped 300 cases today as far as their number of cases. Grayson County, which has a more similar population, 16,000 to 17,000, but it is a very rural area. But they've had already 117 cases, mainly largely related to the Galax area as well. Washington County has a much higher population than we do, and they're up to 142 cases. I expect them to continue going up rather rapidly as well. Smith and With counties have closer to a 30,000 population, which is higher than we do, and they've kind of been ebbing and flowing along the way. It really depends on how seriously people do take things. We do know that according to the modeling that has been done regarding the number of cases that are predicted in each locality, how much people take these, what we call "social mitigation factors," seriously actually does impact the outcome. So if people take the face mask, the social distancing, the hand washing, and the staying home when you're sick very seriously, then that can significantly lower our total number of cases. Part of what we've been trying to do with this whole thing is slow the spread of disease. And it has been working. You know, luckily Bristol has been relatively spared until this month. During that time, we've been able to accomplish many things within our communities. We have worked with our local community governments. We have worked with our long-term care facilities. We have worked with our hospitals, with our businesses, to try to make sure they have safety plans in place. We have appropriate PPE or protective equipment for our medical providers so that now that they can take care of people without having to worry about PPE. When we first started that, this process, we were very concerned for our emergency first responders because they didn't have enough PPE to respond to every call, like the patient may have COVID, which they very well may. There are some treatments now, antiviral treatments, which are available, although in very limited supply. And there is a vaccine. We hope and pray that it will come in a swift fashion, as is safe and effective, to decrease our spread of COVID-19. We have been trying to work with our hospital system by all this slowing to make sure they can maintain capacity. In locations where they get overwhelmed and overburdened with COVID, what can happen is that if your hospital becomes full, they can't take care of normal sicknesses, nor can they take care of people who can really be helped with their COVID-19 disease. Some people who get it very severe can pass away from COVID-19, but not as many people have to pass away from it if we can keep the progress slow and allow our hospitals to have enough bed capacity to function for all the different medical needs in the community. So we really feel that this slowing process has helped us to achieve many goals that we needed to reach. And not that we're ready to ride out the pandemic and see it surge. We don't want that. But, you know, we're working with it day by day to try to contain it.
So I'll say a thing, and then I have a question or two for you. So I think, kind of like you said, you hit the nail on the head. This is not, wearing a mask is not a political issue. It's not a Republican thing or a Democrat thing. And, you know, people may just not want to do, you know, what the face mask order says because the governor's a Democrat. But, you know, this virus is the great equalizer. It's going to hit you regardless of political party, age, race, sexual orientation, where you're from, wherever, whatever. I serve on the Board of the District Three Governmental Cooperative, which, as you may know, is mostly focused on senior citizen issues. That goes from, you know, Meals on Wheels-type services to, you know, community centers to whatever else. And I know they're at a much higher risk. And I myself, I have type 1 diabetes, and I have a very, so it's a very high comorbidity rate for coronavirus. But speaking about senior citizens and people who are disabled and maybe low income, when someone goes into quarantine, you know, if I go into quarantine or anyone up here goes into quarantine, we have access to DoorDash to get food. We have access to telemedicine to see our doctors, whatever. Do you know of, or has your health department done anything with any kind of outreach programs to people who may be low-income and don't have cell service, internet service, don't have an ability to still get their basic needs and remain safe? You know, because I feel like there must be some amount of people who should stay in quarantine but have to go get food or have to continue living as much as they can outside of the house. So do you know of any kind of outreach programs? Are you all involved in any of that?
Certainly, when we do talk with every patient that goes in isolation and quarantine, and one of the things we make sure is that they have appropriate resources to stay through that. Generally speaking, family members are able to help them accommodate their needs, but not always. We do have lists of resources and other local community agencies that we can work with should we need to accommodate someone who does not have the resources to ride it out.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I don't want to take up your whole evening, and I debated asking this because we're not the school board. You know, they're working really hard down the street, coming up with their plan. I appreciate all the work the superintendent has put into that. But just what are your thoughts in general with the first day of school rapidly approaching? What will that look like?
Well, we've had several discussions with Dr. Perigin, as well as our surrounding community superintendents, and it's a very difficult question to answer. When we had these conversations a month ago, I mean, Dr. Perigin was sitting pretty fine with, you know, not many cases in Bristol and felt pretty confident about opening fully. But this month is certainly, we can see how this can quickly turn. So we've had some discussions about what school opening will look like. It is, I have instructed the superintendents that they need to remain flexible this year. We are going to have a combination of in-person learning and online learning throughout the year. It will be like a yo-yo in and out of classes. I think that, again, we measure our cases in 5s and 10s rather than 100s and 200s. So as we look at how this impacts our community, every case is important. But I do think that at least getting the children back to school initially is important to get started. Get them their computers, teach them how to learn online, tell them how they need to have an online instruction. I know there has been a lot of discussion, and you mentioned about internet access, regarding internet access for all the children. And I know that there has been discussion with the city as well regarding making sure that these children in all developments have appropriate internet access so that they can learn this year, because we know that health inequities do cause our children who have more difficulty to really fall behind in their learning. So as much as we can do to prepare our parents and our students to have this online learning as it becomes appropriate throughout the year. As we see cases in schools, we will be quarantining classes along the way. Should there become a point when there aren't enough teachers to teach and there's too many students out in quarantine, then we'll need to close things down. We are waiting further guidance from the Department of Education, as well as the State Department of Health regarding any sort of algorithms or things that we need to be using regarding this. For now, we are just, you know, working on helping them to have the appropriate safety plans. They have come up with them, we just advise. But looking at safety plans and trying to keep our students as safe as they can in schools, we do value the learning opportunity, and we encourage them to learn in person as much as possible. But again, the more safe, the safer we can keep them in our community, the better chance they have for that in-person learning. But we do need to prepare them to learn online, and the teachers have already been prepared to teach online. And we'll need to look at a very flexible school system this coming year.
Okay.
I have one other question. Listening to that question, reading over this letter some more, it just kind of popped in my head. So I've had, I know you've talked about all the different places you can get tested. I've known personally two people in the past month who have contracted coronavirus. One of them got their test back pretty quickly. One of them didn't get their test back until after the 14 days was over.
Yes.
So there seems to be, there's an abundance of tests available in this area. But can you speak to some of the backlog for the testing? Because in my mind, it doesn't do a lot of good if you have, the whole time you have coronavirus, you don't know that you have it until you're back to work.
Yes, certainly, the availability of testing and the turnaround time on testing is what is very significant when it comes to containing this disease. We need as many people to get tested as feel like they are sick or have concern. But we also need those tests to come back fast. back faster. From the time that you are exposed to the virus to the time you exhibit symptoms can be anywhere from two to 14 days. That's why we have a 14-day quarantine regardless of whether you test negative along the way. We do know that if a person's test takes five days to come back, they've potentially infected a whole nother round of people who have already potentially become symptomatic and infected a whole nother round of people. So having those turnaround times as quick as possible is very vital to containment of disease. We have struggled with these test results, and I know of several who have come, that have come back over two weeks after they were done. They're already weighed on their isolation by then, and any contacts they have have already infected two or three more rounds of people. So it does feel rather useless in that situation. We have been having discussions as a state regarding turnaround times. Because there is a lot more testing, some of the labs have gotten overrun. Different, there are many different private providers of testing at this point, and I mean, different labs. LabCorp, Quest, Fraylin, NextGen, I mean, there are labs all over the state and the country now doing these tests. And so our state does work with those labs regarding their reporting. And so we try not to do unnecessary tests. People who really don't need them shouldn't get them. But at the same time, how do you know who's asymptomatic in the community, this 20% of people who may possibly have it and never know they had it? So I encourage people who are having symptoms to be tested. If they're contacts of cases, they should be tested at five to seven days. If they're concerned they may have COVID and just need to know, they may be tested. One thing we've talked about is that the testing strategy for return to work is no longer favored by CDC, and I don't know if that's something you want to bring up here and want me to address at this point.
Yeah, I think that would be perfect because I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, so right now, there are different, so let me come back to that. But so we are actively aware that that's a problem, and we're working on it. Not that it's in my power to affect the turnaround times, but just being knowledgeable, and I thank you for bringing that up, that that is a concern that we have. So, you know, America, Virginia, Bristol, by no means has beaten this disease. Neither has the world, for that matter. We all have a lot of work we need to do in common together. Now, when it comes to return to work policies, and this is something that was made more definitive just last week by the CDC, and we shared this information, is that there are, for ending isolation, so a person who is sick, a case, who has had a positive test, is in isolation for approximately 10 days. There are several factors that go into it. I'm happy to give you as many details as you like, but it's approximately 10 days. It depends on several things. In order to, during that time, you're felt to be most contagious. You have a virus that if it is shed, can infect someone else. That's your contagious period. So isolation ends when three criteria are met. If you test positive and have symptoms, you have to be 10 days from the onset of symptoms, so you have to have had at least 10 days since your symptoms started, and you have to have no fever for 24 hours with no fever-reducing medication, and you have to have improving symptoms. This is the majority of cases. Will meet these criteria in the mild to moderate category. For those who are severe, have to be hospitalized or may be immunocompromised, these criteria may not be appropriate for them, and we have other modalities for that. The second strategy is what we call time-based strategy. If a person tests positive but they never had any symptoms, you don't have anything to go by for that date, so we use time-based strategy. From the date of their test, we count 10 days, and at the end of 10 days, as long as they haven't developed symptoms, they can come out of isolation. The third-based strategy is called test-based strategy, and this means you have to have two negative PCR tests in order to end isolation. At the beginning of all this, the CDC favored both the symptom and the test-based strategy, but we didn't have enough tests to do extra tests for test-based strategy, so we went solely by symptom. As tests became more plentiful, we were able to implement the test-based strategy as a best practice, and we used that for several of our healthcare workers. But we found, because we didn't want healthcare workers going back and taking care of a vulnerable population if they were still testing positive, but we found many of these healthcare workers, a month later, were still testing positive. They were well, but still had a positive test. They would test negative, test positive, test negative, test positive. It was prolonging their absence from work. And so thankfully, just last week, the CDC, and there's a link, you're welcome to share, came out with very specific data on, with science, that talks about the progress of the disease and what is best practice at this time. Currently, they do not feel that after nine days in a mild to moderate case, that there is infectious virus that is still being shed. So by the 10th day, the infectious virus is no longer shed in the majority of cases, and those criteria we go by. So therefore, it is felt that both the symptom-based strategy and the time-based strategy for symptomatic and asymptomatic positives are best practice for return to work. The CDC did discourage test-based strategy for the majority of the population as a strategy for return to work. I understand it has been difficult with the city because the city policy does recommend the test-based strategy, which at some point was good, but we do have new evidence now, and I think we need to be flexible in the face of new evidence to consider changing that strategy.
Well, first, Dr. Shelton, I want to thank you since late February, early March. You've been a tremendous asset to me and to city staff as we make some of these decisions. I know Council, she has answered the phone calls for me on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, late at night, whenever issues have arisen, and I really do appreciate that. Question about pool testing. I know the FDA approved pool testing recently. How confident do you feel that that's an effective strategy to get more tests? I mean, obviously, you're going to get more tests completed at one time, but if there's one positive test out of 100, you've still got to individually test each one of those swabs. So do you feel that's an effective strategy moving forward?
Well, we're looking at all different kinds of strategies. It has to how to optimize our tests but still get very accurate test results. So if the FDA has approved it, then it must have some validity. I think that, you know, as we look toward which labs are capable of doing that most effectively, that'll be something very important to consider. I know that the state lab is looking at that possibility as well. I am not the testing expert, so I'll leave that to them. But if the FDA has approved it, and they can make sure that it is done effectively and accurately, then anything we can do to kind of speed up our testing would be helpful. Those type of tests, though, will only work in communities where there is not a lot of disease.
Right.
I mean, right now, our tests, you know, our testing positive percentages, for the district range at about 11.3%, which is up. We were just 5.6% positivity last week, two weeks ago, as a district. For Bristol, the testing positivity is ranging at about 10% right now, actually about 12%. So we've had more cases. So in very low-risk communities, that might be effective, and the higher-risk communities will have to see what they feel is the best balance of that strategy.
I do have one other question. I know you just said you weren't the testing expert, but I do know of an individual who went and had what's called a rapid test. They get a result back in about 20 minutes. I believe they tested positive, and then they, maybe the day later, the same day, they had a test at the health department, and they tested negative. Can you shed some light on that and whether or not a person should get a rapid test or whether a health department test is more appropriate?
Yes, testing is, I spent the better part of last week reconciling different tests results. So we have to remember, though, that these tests do not necessarily test the same thing. Most of the rapid tests that I'm aware of in our area are a rapid antigen test. So the antigen test is, the antigen is what your body produces in reaction to the virus, whereas a PCR test is actual test of the virus being present itself. So we know that the confirmed tests come from PCR tests, which is testing the actual viral RNA in our noses. And so the antigen test is a proxy for that, and from the providers that I have talked to locally and the machine that they're using, it has been a validated test. As far as if you are positive, the correlation with that has been close to 100% positive. But if you are negative on that test, there's a 1 in 5 chance you could be positive. So there's, so for people who are symptomatic, they will then go on to do PCRs. Now, I know that people have been, I will, this is probably not a very nice way to say this, test shopping until they get the result they want. So we've had people getting multiple repetitive tests and coming up with discrepant values, and it's very hard to reconcile that. But regarding the antigen test rapid positive on the same day as a negative PCR, it is difficult to reconcile that, except for they are not testing the same thing. It could be, and again, this, and I will tell you that the science that I talked to you about for ending isolation, we are six months into this, and the CDC just last week published science on a PCR test that we have been doing since March. Okay? So the antigen test, don't have any of that science behind them yet. Maybe in six months, I'll have a better answer. But I will tell you that it's measuring a different thing. My thought is that perhaps, and this is, please don't anybody write this down, because your body has to see the virus in order to create an antigen, that perhaps the antigen lingers past when the virus is already gone. And so you're still getting a little bit of that effect. We also have, we look at bell curves for epidemiology, and there's also then the antibody, which everybody wants an antibody test, that I have it and didn't know it, and that's a blood test. Is there a chance that I've had it and didn't know it? And the state is doing some sampling of antibody testing, and for Southwest, it looks like approximately 1% of people have had it, but it is a very low sample. So there's a lot of different testing modalities out there. So when you talk about positive and negative tests, you have to discern which test you're talking about, and they are not all measuring the same thing. And at different stages along this process, they can be positive and negative and still indicate a history of disease, but maybe in a different stage. So the antigen tests at this point, we do consider them positive, and if they are positive, the person will go into isolation for 10 days and their contacts will go into quarantine.
I want to make one comment about something you said in regards to the CDC actually just announced, you know, publishing a study based on science of a PCR test. And I think, this is for anyone listening and everybody out here tonight, what we're seeing today is science playing out in real time. Most of the time, we don't have the opportunity to see science play out in real time. These things are done behind the scenes in labs, and then eventually-
For years.
For years. And then we get this published study that tells us what happens, and then guess what? That's exactly what happens.
I can tell you for hepatitis A, we can tell you exactly when all those blood tests turn positive, turn negative, what a bell curve looks like, when you can expect to get sick, when you can expect to get better. We got all that, but we've been studying that for years.
Right. And so I think it's important for the public to understand, this is real-life science happening before our eyes, and what was told to us two weeks ago may not be the same answer that we know now. And, you know, I know there's always been a lot of discussions. I've had a lot of debates about whether or not something is accurate or not, but I said this in an op-ed that I wrote back in early April, decisions that we're making today is based on the best information that we have at the moment. And that information changes daily, if not hourly. So please, everybody, understand that this is truly science playing out before your eyes, and we're learning something about a disease that we did not know anything about prior to January 1 of 2020.
Yeah. And, you know, we add, ask for a certain amount of flexibility, you know, regarding when we come out with things. It may change based on what we knew next, and a little bit of grace, knowing that what we're doing, like you said, is treading right on the edge of what we're learning.
Do you have any questions? Councilman, hold on, Ms. Martin. Councilman Mumpire, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Do you mind answering a question from the public there from Ms. Martin?
That's fine.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, Dr. Shelton, I have an interest and a concern about the role of food in the transmission of this virus. For instance, let me just make up an example. I could have four months ago, three months ago, when this all happened, and the restaurants were closed and everything. Now, I could go through a drive-through window and pick up a hamburger, let's say, but I could not eat that same hamburger inside the building. Now, my question and my concern is, do we know, we may not, do we know the role of food itself in the transmission of this virus? Now, if I go down to Food City and buy a head of lettuce or whatever and wash it, is it apt to have been exposed to the virus? And if it were exposed, what difference would it make? In other words, does the virus flourish on food, whether it's cooked or uncooked? Now, I have two friends, and we've talked about this many times, and they're almost hermits, and they won't eat anything they don't cook. Well, now, I don't look at it that way. But the role of food, fresh food, not canned, cooked or uncooked, does this facilitate the virus or what?
So food is not felt to be a transmitter of this virus, thankfully.
Good.
So when we talk about this virus being a respiratory virus, it's respiratory particles. So even if someone breathed on your food and you eat it, that is not the root of transmission because the eating, when you digest it-
That is the heart of what I wanted to know.
That will not be an issue. But you do want to be careful regarding the containers your food comes in. And so when you have your containers, after you take your food out of that takeout container, wash your hands before you then eat it. Theoretically, our restaurants are doing their best as far as wearing their masks and not breathing on the food, and that's why we advocate all of our restaurants, don't breathe on the food and the glasses and that sort of a thing. And so when they hand you your food, it should be very safe. But after you take your food out of the container, you can wash your hands and then eat your food, and that should be fine.
All right. So if the person serving of the food gets droplets on the food and then gives it to me to eat, I'm still all right?
You're all right, but they're supposed to be wearing their mask.
Oh, I know that. I know. But that's the heart of what I'm going to-
But yes, this is not transmitted through eating food.
All right. Thank you very much. That answered my question.
So, Dr. Shelton, one, I want to thank you and your staff and everybody at the health department, as City Manager said, and I know other organizations that have contacted you to try to get guidance and information, and I appreciate the work you've done. As you say, it's something that's rapidly evolving. It's changing. Again, this is new for not only our community but for our country and the world. And I think you're absolutely right that flexibility is probably the best thing we need now, is to be nimble but to use common sense and to take the measures you mentioned, you know, social distancing, wearing face covering, washing your hands. If you don't feel good, stay home. I mean, my question, though, is, and I get bombarded every morning. I look on my email, the phone, you know, the CYB, Herald Courier, everybody, all these metrics they're putting out there for not only us as decision-makers in the community, but just people in general. What would you recommend are the best things to kind of be looking at to get us the metrics that we should really be following? Because there are so many, and you can slice them and dice them different ways, and they each tell a different story. So what would you recommend is probably the best thing to get a sense of how well the community's going in the direction it's moving in?
That's a great question. The Virginia Department of Health has a website, vdh.virginia, spelled out, dot G O V. And on that website, there's a COVID-19 data page, and under that, you can go to a dashboard and you can see what the cases are for Bristol and any county or city within the state. You can go over one tab to demographics. The third tab is locality, and that will help to show, if you click on Bristol, how many cases per day. So knowing how many cases we report each day is helpful. If you see an increasing trend, you know that there's more active cases. If you see a decreasing trend, you know there's less active cases. You can go over another tab. There's an outbreak section. We haven't yet had any outbreaks for Bristol, Virginia City. And the next tab over will be testing, and it only shows Mount Rogers District as a whole, but it lets you know how many tests we do and the percent of positivity of tests. Certainly, one of our biggest outcomes of concern is the number of deaths within the district. So when we see the hospitalizations and deaths go up, we know that that is a very concerning metric that we have to watch very closely and make sure we're protecting our most vulnerable citizens. So as we look at a combination of how many tests we're having each day, how are our tests going, how quickly are they coming back, but we don't have a turnaround time metric unfortunately on the website. And as we look at our hospital capacity, there is another tab on there, but I don't think it shows, I think it shows Southwest as a region but not the city of Bristol, you know, as far as, and Ballot is pretty good to report their number of COVID cases and their capacity. So we want to make sure that our hospitals maintain capacity in order to take care of us when we do get ill.
Well, and as I say, I appreciate everything you're doing. I know for a long time to come, especially even as the numbers go down, your work probably increases because then the contact tracing area becomes much, much more important. But, you know, anything you have to share with us, with the community, you're welcome anytime to come back, and I appreciate you coming out this evening and all the work that you've been doing.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. We appreciate your support of the health department and this opportunity to talk with the council and also the citizens regarding COVID-19 in Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item number five, which is approval of the 2020 CDBG Annual Action Plan and the Five-Year Consolidated Plan. Ms. Tallman?
So on July 14, 2020, at a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, the- mayor's subcommittee was formed and directed to review the received applications and other funding allocations for consideration and final approval of the City Council. The subcommittee met July 21st and approved staff's final recommendations with no changes. Staff is requesting the council to approve both the CDBG five-year consolidated plan and the CDBG 2020 Annual Action Plan as presented.
Okay.
Do you have any questions or?
Public comment again, I don't think anyone had signed up. We just had the public hearing, so.
I have one thing I want to just say real quick. So, um, thank you for all the work you put in on this. And, um, you know, as you know, maybe the people listening don't know, Councilman Wingard and myself were the, were the subcommittee that worked on this. And, you know, we also did the subcommittee for the CARES, or for the CARES Act CDBG money. And sometimes it feels like, you know that TV show, The Odd Couple? When you get together, sometimes it feels like that with, with him and I, but we, um, we found a lot of agreement. And I, and I think, I can't speak for him, but I can, I can speak for myself, that the, the programs that we are funding are very beneficial to the people who need help. Um, and I think that the money will go a long way, in that sense, the money will go a long way in, in the sense of, um, cleaning up our blighted houses and, and, you know, like helping with our elevator Virginia Middle School and stuff. So I appreciate the work you've done with this.
Well, I appreciated you both.
I appreciate it. Glad you all enjoyed that. It's, it's always an interesting process. Now, we'll just say, I mean, we're, we're very fortunate that we are in Taiwan City, that we get the money directly from HUD and we don't have to go through a competitive process because this gives us funding to do things that, that otherwise we probably would not be able to do, uh, to serve, um, s- some of the low-income populations here in the city. So, uh, we are very fortunate to have this resource. And I think it's a good use, the way it gets allocated. There's always more need than, than resources, but I think, um, we're meeting those goals. So with that being said, I have a motion to approve the 2020 CDG, CDBG Annual Action Plan and the five-year consolidated plan.
I move that we approve the Annual Action Plan and the five-year consolidated plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clark, call Earl.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower. Mumpower.
Yeah?
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Move to item number six, a resolution authori- authorizing transfer of Lot 17 at the Falls to the Industrial Development Authority.
Uh, council, uh, tonight I have, um, Brent Wash- Washwall and Mike Hamlin with Interstate Development here, uh, to discuss i- if there's any questions in regards to a transfer at Lot 17. It's a lot directly to the west of Aldis within the Falls development. I can tell you that, uh, they have been working on this project for probably at least 18 months now. Uh, when I was in Las Vegas last year, uh, we met with this group and, um, we have now been able to nail down a potential tenant for Lot 17. Uh, closing will occur on this relatively shortly, uh, with the Palmetto, um, I think it's Palmetto Development. Um, what, what you have before you tonight is a declaration of restrictions. These restrictions do restrict, uh, future types of businesses that are similar to this business, uh, coming within the Falls. Uh, based on the type of business that's being proposed, I, I do not see any issue with those types of restrictions. You also had a shared access easement. Uh, this is an easement that would allow, uh, the new company to build a U-shaped driveway from Lot 17 across what would still then be the city's property at Lot 16. They will maintain that easement for the duration until a, another tenant is found for Lot 16. There's also a designation of signage, uh, which they would abide by the signage requirements that are set in the city, um, and where that signage would be. Uh, there is also a warranty deed from the city to the IDA. Uh, there is a warranty deed from the IDA to Palmetto Bristol LLC, but that warranty deed was not included in your package. That is an IDA matter. And then finally, there is a resolution. So what I would ask for tonight is a motion to approve the declaration of restrictions, a, the shared access easement, the designation of signage, and the deed, uh, from the city to the IDA.
Okay. Um, again, no one signed up, but is there any public comment? Mr. Pollard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. Um, I think that the, my question may have been answered, but I would like a clarification on this. It sounds like the restrictions that are referenced will be, uh, again, on the other properties to prevent others from competing against this place rather than on this property, correct? So that they'll be allowed to do auto-service and others then won't be able to compete against them doing similar services?
That's correct.
Okay. I've misunderstood in reading the documentation. Thank you.
All right. More comments?
Is this that auto parts business?
This is a subsidiary of Bridgestone.
Firestone?
Yes.
That's Firestone too, I think.
Firestone Complete and Care.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Read the resolution by captioning.
Sure. Resolution to convey Lot 17 at the Falls Development to the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Okay. Do I have a, um, motion to approve the Declaration of Restrictions, the shared access easement, the designation of signage, and the warranty deed?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All right. Have a motion, Councilman Osborne, second vice mayor, Farnum. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clark, call Earl.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yeah.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number seven, COPS Hiring Program Award. Uh, staff report?
Uh, council, Chief Austin will be giving a quick staff report on this grant. This was a grant that, uh, Mr. Jack Johnson had mentioned to us, uh, sometime last year in regards for extra police in the city. And I know, uh, the city has taken advantage of the COPS grant previously, but, um, they again, applied for this grant and were awarded the grant, uh, on June the 25th.
All right. Mayor, City Council, we applied for this grant back in February, uh, through the US Department of Justice, more specifically the Office on Community Order and Policing Services, or COPS. Uh, this grant is a 75-25 match. It is for four new officers. They would be patrol officers, basically in community policing, but be placed on the shifts for each patrol. Uh, the program will partially fund four officers' positions. The federal grant would allow hiring four new positions utilizing federal dollars of a required match. Year one, the federal match would be, amount would be $189,027. The local match would be $67,081. The second year, the federal amount would be $175,611. The local match would be $80,497. The federal amount for year three would be $135,362. The local amount would be $127,46. The fourth year and any year plus that or forward, that would be picked up totally by the city, uh, for all funding of the four officers. Uh, as a total, the federal money would be $500,000. The local match for the three-year period would be $268,324. So we are asking that you approve that to hire new officers tonight.
And council, I'll clarify, uh, if you do, uh, tonight, is this an approval to move forward to, uh, sign the grant applica- or sign the grant award? And then we would have supplemental appropriation at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, any, any, see, first, let's see, any public comment? No one signed up, but does anybody have? Do you have a comment? Mister? Oh, okay. That's comment. Thank you, Ms. Knopf. Um, do I have a, a motion and a second from council?
I move to approve the, uh, the COPS Hiring Program Award.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, Councilman Osborne, second by the vice mayor. Any questions? Any dis- any questions for Chief Austin while he's there? Then any discussion?
I don't have any questions for, for chief. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I do have a concern because, uh, year four, this is going to add 100% of salaries for full benefits. But anyway, I do have concerns because this is going to be a, a increase to the city budget and a population that is shrinking. And everybody's banking on the casino.
Yeah.
If the casino comes, this is not an issue. We're going to need those officers. If we do not get the casino, this is going to be a major issue down the road. So I'm going to make a recommendation. First, I need to know the timeline in which this grant has to be finalized.
Yeah, 45 days from the date of the award. The award, it was awarded on June 25th.
Okay. So the timeline's not there. But I'm going to caution this council. This is an increase in debt to our taxpayers in a city that is declining in population. So we need to be careful.
I'd just say, you know, in the past, uh, since I've been on council, I think four, maybe five years ago now, it's probably five years ago, uh, we received a similar grant like this that allowed us to put school resource officers in all the schools. And that is, very proud that we're able to do that. As a parent, I'm glad that those resource officers are there in the schools. Um, you know, the need for these officers is apparent already. Um, you know, with, as, um, City Manager mentioned, Jack Johnson, other people have been talking about, you know, the, the issues in our city and we need more officers. Just last spring, at the Coffee for the Mayors, they were talking about the need for police, more police officers, particularly in the downtown. Um, just in the last weeks, having officers test positive for COVID show us just, you know, that are, we could use more staffing. So regardless, and, and especially if the casino, if the voters approve that in November, I think everyone agrees we're going to need more policing, but we'd also have the means to pay for it. I think this is a, a good way to pay for it because it steps it up. It, it doesn't, uh, add debt, it adds an obligation over time. But, uh, again, it's phased in, so it gives you plenty of time, uh, to, to deal with that over the, the four years. And it'd be a whole lot easier, uh, than trying to go out and adding even one or two officers without this funding in place. So it's, um, I do appreciate, um, uh, the work Chief and other people did trying to find this funding, uh, to, to help make our community safer, so.
Yeah, I was just going to kind of touch on and add to what you said. Um, since I've been, um, since I've had the opportunity to sit here, I, I've never heard anyone come and say, we have too many police officers. Uh, I've heard the opposite, that we need more. Um, and I, I do under, understand your hesitations about, you know, we don't need to grow our budget exponentially and spend more than we've got coming in. But, but I think one way to think of it is, you know, in a way, over the next few years, we're probably going to need to be hiring police officers anyway. And, you know, what I'm looking at is over the next three years where the matching is, if we didn't have this, we would be spending roughly $768,000 of taxpayer money to fund those positions. But with this grant, we're only spending $268,000 and we're getting $500,000 from this grant. It, it seems like a, a no-brainer to say, yes, this is important. Um, I, I wouldn't want to be here representing the citizens. We heard someone earlier today say it's about the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Uh, I wouldn't want to turn away this grant money that we could bring into the city to help us.
I have one question for you, um, about it. So I know it's 75-25, 50-50, 25, saying it goes down. So does that 75-25 cover just the salary or does it also cover the, the benefits, like the health insurance?
It does cover the benefits also.
So it's, so that covers the whole, the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So what I'll say about it, um, I understand the concern about not spending more money right away, but, but just as we've discussed a little bit, you know, and especially previous meetings, uh, we need to have a plan, assuming this casino comes. And, um, that's going to involve more police officers, and that's going to involve more firefighters and then more, more services. So this is a good opportunity, I think, to start ramping up the staffing level at the police department in a way that, um, won't cost us as much money as just doing it all at once. Just, just like the vice mayor said, just spending it all, 100% all at once. And, and aside from that, a phrase that, that you said, chief, that, that I think was important, you said, "community-based policing," which you hear a lot about that with everything that's going on in some big cities. And we don't, we've been fortunate that we don't have a lot of the same tensions and strive here as, as you see in big cities. And, and I think that is a testament to how you all do your job and what you do. And you're out in the community and you're connecting with people. And people feel safe when they see our police officers here, I think, you know? And, and there's, there's always issues that, you know, can be discussed, and you've been in the meetings with me, you know, in the past couple of months discussing some of them. But, but I do want to commend you for the way that you all do your job and, and interact with the community. You're out there doing good. And, and I'm excited that we have this opportunity to help you out, help you out and give you some more people to do some more good with.
Thank you. Any, anything, any more discussion?
Well, I'm just going to make this one comment here. You know, we're never going to get our tax rates down to an acceptable level if we keep spending money and adding money to the city, to the city budget. Our real estate taxes are too high. People are paying $33 to put trash in, people do. And if we keep spending money, we're never going to get our taxes down and get things pulled back in line in the city the way that we need to have. So the opportunity is there to hire more officers, but the question is, is that the right thing to do for this city? For this city? Is that the right thing for us to do?
Yes. Chief, how long have you worked for the, for the department?
30 years.
Okay. I've lived in Bristol for 32 years. And, uh, every day I felt safe, every single day. So I appreciate the work you guys are doing. And if we can help in any way, which I think we can right now, we're happy to help.
Thank you. Any, any further comment? Do you, Ms. Knopf, you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
May I?
Yeah. I'll call out.
With the grant money that's, that's supporting that, if we get pushed to our seams, say like five years from now, if we're pushed to a budget of our seam, will that lead to a, um, layoff or, or possibly something in that area? Or are we looking to keep this grant, uh, going by our support coming from the city? In other words, the part that we have to match or come up to, will we have that in, say, three, four, five years? Or we don't know, we're just taking advantage of this grant now?
You, well, I-
Because it makes sense to take advantage of what-
Yeah.
-they're offering to us now and then work towards keeping-
Yeah. And, and I will try to answer that, and you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, chief. But my understanding, and, and this is based on the last grant, is- my understanding, and this is based on the last grant, is first year, we pay 25. The second year, we pay 50. The third year, we pay 75. And the fourth year, we have to pay 100%, and then that's it. After that year, we're no longer committed to those positions.
That's correct.
So it steps it up to where by the end of four years, we're paying 100% of the cost. But we have to pay that for at least one full year, our sales, and then after that, according to the grant. So, but, so, you know, for four years, we're committed to these positions. After that, you know, you could do whatever you wanted.
Now, Mr. Osborne had a point when he said that we need a plan, a plan that's going to pass four years.
Yep.
And I would suggest as a taxpayer that we take advantage of the grant now, and then that gives us the incentive to work towards keeping, because we're going to be responsible, you're saying, after four years for the whole amount. Is that right?
After three years, we're responsible for the full amounts. On year four, we're responsible for 100% of salaries and benefits for those four officers. And so first year, we're only responsible for 25%. Next year, we're responsible for 50%. The year after that, we're responsible for 75%. And the following year, we're responsible for 100% of their salaries and benefits for those four officers. I want to touch on something you said about a plan. You know, would that potentially include layoffs if we have a strained budget? You know, thankfully, we have a CFO who watches our numbers religiously. And what we, our plan has always been and always will be, once we start seeing revenues dip, we make adjustments on the expense side, regardless of whether that's this month or whether it's 18 months from now. The first thing that you do, you have to watch your expenses. And I don't think there's a better time to talk about this than what we're in the middle of a pandemic, because we don't know what's going to happen six weeks from now with this pandemic. If, for whatever reason, we have to go back down to a Phase One lockdown, or even worse, in regards to our businesses and how our tax revenue is being generated, you know, our first, our first thing that we do is we put the brakes on spending. And we put the brakes on spending on Friday, March 13th here, this past year, and that really, really helped us get through June 30th by putting those brakes on that spending. So what I want to assure the citizens and council, you know, the first thing we do is we stop any spending. And then, you know, it's the last thing that anyone wants to do in this room. You would potentially have to go to a furlough situation, and then worst-case scenario, you would have to go to a layoff situation. You know, our hope is that we never get to that point. And while I fully agree with what Mr. Wingard says, you know, this does add to our budget, and it's something that we have to prepare for in the future. And he mentioned, you know, if we don't get the casino and how that will impact the city, what I can tell the citizens of the City of Bristol, if, and he's worried about tax rates, which he should be because they are high, if we don't get the casino and we don't have some form of new revenue coming into this city, then I can promise you, services are probably going to decrease, which means a decrease in people working for the City of Bristol, and your tax rate's probably going to increase. Because we cannot deal with the amount of burden, the debt burden that is getting ready to hit us over the next four years without doing those two things. And that's something no one wants to hear. It's something no one wants to talk about. But that's the reality of where we'll be.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing non-Clark Cullver.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes.
Before we get into the next item, which could take a little while, we'll go ahead and break for about a five-minute recess, if that's all right. Go ahead and reconvene the meeting. And we'll move now to item number eight, which is presentation on CARES Act funds.
Counsel, we have talked for several months in regards to CARES Act funding. First, the questions were, our localities wouldn't get any funding to deal with the pandemic. Then the question became, yes, we're getting funding, but when are we getting the funding? And on June the 9th, the city received notification that we did receive some CARES Act funding. Now, CARES Act funding is very specific as to what we can do with that CARES Act funding. And those funds can only cover costs that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019, also known as COVID-19. Two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, 2020. And three, were incurred during the period that begins on March 1, 2020, and ends on December 30, 2020. So in order to deal with the CARES funding that the city received, which was $1.4 million, we formed a committee to look at the city needs citywide, and that included myself, the CFO, the senior accountant, the police chief, fire chief, the fire department office administrator, CDBG coordinator, director of public works, the sheriff, and the director of social services. We've had committee discussions on June the 8th. That was the overview of the CARES money that was available and eligible expenditures. Then we had a 22-day lag period, but you also have to remember, we're right in the middle of the budget season, trying to get a budget passed at that time as well, and that took precedent over the CARES funding. So then again, on June the 30th of 2020, a discussion of citywide department requests was had, that all the department heads had submitted. July 9th, we continued the discussion of the department requests and the ranking mythology instructions. And then on July the 16th, we reviewed those rankings and item criteria evaluation. As I previously mentioned, the city received $1.462 million in CARES funding. I will also say that at about 5:58 PM tonight, I did receive an email from Secretary of Finance, Aubrey Lane, advising localities that there is additional CARES funding that is available and coming our way. So we will start that paperwork tomorrow morning. During the month of June, we earned $223.61 in interest on the $1.4 million. So fiscal year 20, COVID-19 expenditures you all previously approved was $13,704.94. Out of the CARES money for fiscal year 21, which is the current fiscal year we're in, we allocated $22,075 for a fire position to be funded through December the 30th. Same with a police position of $32,765. At the last council meeting, council approved $300,000 to go towards the Sheriff's Department for inmate housing and medical, and $10,000 towards public works. That left the city with a remaining balance of $1.084 million of money to deal with the city needs as it related to COVID-19. Over the course of the past six weeks, the citywide department request totaled $870,727, which leaves us a balance of $213,371.67 yet to be expended. We will go down through these items, and I will explain each one of them to the best of my ability. I also have the department heads that are impacted here tonight to give you a little bit more detail if there are questions. Furthermore, everybody that's in the room was a member of the committee, so that we can also validate the needs that we have to deal with COVID-19. First on the list is PPE supplies for the Bristol, Virginia Sheriff's Department. This is personal protective equipment, gloves, gowns, thermometers, masks, safety glasses, face shields, shoe covers, et cetera. These supplies are necessary to handle a positive COVID-19 individual as required by the CDC. That request, I said, is $40,967. Second request you have in front of you is temperature monitoring devices. It's the Meridian Temperature Check Kiosk, 22 of those, and 88 handheld temperature scanners. Those 22 devices, the monitors would be placed at facilities that have the greatest number of walk-in guests on average and that have high employee traffic. So we would anticipate, we'd have four of those in City Hall, two at PD, three at the Fire Department, one at Clear Creek, one at the Senior Center, three within Parks and Rec. And we would also have one at the DSS, one at jail, two at court, one in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Furthermore, there's 88 handheld scanners that would be used in every department, plus each police cruiser would be able to have a handheld scanner. These devices will give the city the ability to ascertain the mean of body temperature of all individuals involved in city business. The Meridian Kiosk will serve as an ingress point of monitors for all in-building businesses, while handheld scanners will assist in extra building affairs, including police work. And that was a $72,300 request. The next request was IT, $27,392, and that's a sheriff and court response remote device. This is a Polycom unit. It's an inmate video conferencing system and a three-years of remote warranty. The purpose of this video conferencing system allows inmates to video conference with judges, attorneys, and law enforcement while under quarantine. It provides a safe and secure video conference solution for appearances, arraignments, and other judicial interactions that deliver local services to citizens, no matter where they're located, minimizing the need to transport inmates for court appearances, arraignments, and other judicial interactions. I can tell you from speaking, personal experience, it's very nice as an attorney to be able to talk to a client through a video conferencing system if you do have it. I have not had the opportunity to practice with criminal defendants during COVID-19, but I can see the benefit of having this, of being able to, because a lot of jails were not allowing outside visitors in to meet with inmates during the pandemic, and some jails are still not allowing that. We're often seeing outbreaks in jails across the country of COVID-19. And the more we see of that, the more likely that jails will be locked down, which would prevent the criminal justice system from carrying on as normal. This, they did use a video conferencing system this past spring while the COVID-19, while we were in the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, and they are still using that to some degree at this point. This is a Polycom system which would integrate seamlessly with the current Polycom system within the courthouse. Next, you have $96,823. That's City Remote Work Solutions. These would basically be laptops and servers throughout the city. You'd have 24 standard laptop servers, six executive laptops, eight engineering mobile workstations for engineering and IT to have the ability to run intensive software. This solution provides the majority of the workforce the means to remote work while in quarantine or lockdown. The city used on-hand devices to achieve this during the current lockdown, but at the expense of other operations. This solution would provide for an ever-ready response for quarantine and lockdown situations. The next item is $50,000. This is personal protective equipment citywide and with community partners. One, it would protect City Hall and other public service agencies, particularly if there's a resurgence of the virus. It includes masks, gloves, and sanitation supplies. The next item is $26,410. That is a Turbo UV Small Room Ambulance Sanitizer, and this would clean and disinfect city rooms and vehicles. As you can see, the next one, two, three, four, five items all do the same thing at various, at various costs and for various reasons. You can see there is a touchless dispenser for refills, $18,000. Another UV lighting system, $18,540. A 55-gallon drum, several drums of disinfectant and contaminant. I can tell you, based on the experience that we had on the night of July 16th, that would come in handy when we had to disinfect the entire City Hall and the Police Department. That was roughly a three-hour operation of individuals going through each room and sanitizing the rooms as best they could. It was a two-person crew. I can tell you, moving forward, if we have a positive individual within City Hall or Police Department or anywhere else in the city, based on CDC standards and the current occupational safe and healthy, health standards, we have to close that facility for 24 hours before we can go in and disinfect it. So more than likely, the facility will be closed for at least two days in the event there is a positive known case within a facility going on in the future. And that disinfectant will come in handy over the next six to 12 months as we deal with this pandemic. Next item are cordless handheld spot sanitizers. Those are UV lights. Anytime you see a UV symbol on here, that's a UVC light. It is known to kill the coronavirus within a few seconds of being exposed to the UV light. And these would be used in offices and other small areas so that someone could disinfect relatively quickly. We have $14,530 for cordless handheld sprayers. Once again, that would be used to disinfect. $15,000 for community response kits. These kits consist of large quantities of face masks, gloves, wet wipes, and hand sanitizer, and will be distributed to neighborhoods and community areas within the city for localized distribution to residents. Approximately 10 kits will be assembled. Each kit will contain the following: face mask, either surgical mask or reusable cloth mask, approximately 500. Approximately 500 gloves, that's 250 pairs. Five boxes of various, of varying size. Wet wipes, 100 packs of 50 wipes each. Hand sanitizer, 104-ounce bottles. And we also may purchase storage totes to aid in the delivery of these items. Next is $120,000 for small business grants. We've talked about that. I think everyone up here has mentioned that it would be a good idea to be able to provide funds to small businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-19 virus. The key to this $120,000 is 100,000 would be used for small business grants. $20,000 would be used for support staff to administer those grants through December 30th of 2020. Next, you have a cordless backpack sprayer for $40,320. We would be ordering several of those as well, not just one for $40,000. Next, we would have courthouse entrance, safety restrictions, $15,000. This is in order to aid the bailiffs, to prevent them from being overly exposed to people as they come in and better have a grasp on the flow of traffic as it comes in and out of the courthouse. Next is temporary janitorial staff of $12,000. I will go ahead and tell you that this will not be the last time that you see my request for janitorial staff. Over the past several months, I can tell you, one of the main things that we have stressed is cleanliness of our work areas. It is incumbent among the employer to clean the work areas. It's not, it's not the employee's job to clean the work area. And that is also stated in the latest regulations that we have to abide by that were promulgated by the Department of Labor and Industry this past week. You will see, probably in my budget, not probably, but you will, you will see an increased budget line for janitorial staff in my upcoming budget. We have numerous buildings throughout this city. Many of the buildings have two floors, and right now, we have three staff members to clean every single one of these buildings. I can tell you, the buildings that get the most attention are the courthouse, City Hall, and the Police Department. We're not the only employees in this city. We have employees working at the Skell House. We have employees working at Parks and Rec. We have employees working at Fire Department. Throughout the city, we have buildings that need to be taken care of and need to be cleaned and cleaned thoroughly. So this is just a temporary fix for a long-term problem, and we're working on solutions as we speak as to how to deal with that long-term problem. Next is a $40,000 expenditure for a live-streamed digital equity package to be used here in City Hall. This is equipment and software package that will provide for reliable live-streaming of meetings and events throughout the city for the citizens to view and for us to be able to use. This solution guarantees remote meeting capabilities for the Bristol City Council meetings and other committee gatherings while all or some members are quarantined on or off-site while allowing mass participation from the public. This consists of new cameras, switching, and controller PCs, as well as conferencing software for remote mass gatherings. Also included is the ability to live-stream from locations outside of City Hall. This package includes seven Dell XPS laptops with audiovisual capabilities for some or all council members and other committee members to remote from off-site or to be a part of live meetings. We just had this issue arise within the past three hours, trying to coordinate when someone is off-site and being able to have a meeting. We've attempted, and we're still attempting as we speak. Mr. Mumpower, I think he can probably hear us fairly well. We can't hear him as well as we would like. And I know when the pandemic first hit, you know, one of the questions was, how can we remotely meet through Zoom? I know Rick and Gene worked very hard to make that work so that we could meet through Zoom if necessary and be completely off-site. And with our current audiovisual equipment, it is impossible. These cameras are old, our server is old, and it's impossible to have a very quality off-site meeting if necessary. Next is $34,000 for Kronos. We just implemented Kronos throughout the city. I think there's two departments left to implement Kronos. That, one, it was a timekeeping system because once again- One, it was a timekeeping system because, once again, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, employers are responsible for keeping the time of employees, not the employee. And in order to bring us in compliance with FLSA, we went out and purchased Kronos, the timekeeping piece. This is the Kronos Human Resource Workforce Ready Program. This would allow us the ability to onboard or offboard employees remotely if necessary. It cuts down on paperwork, it cuts, and the purpose and the way you deal with it, especially with COVID, you want to have as little interaction with others as possible. We heard Dr. Shelton today, you know, it's considered a close contact if you're in front of someone and neither one of you wearing a mask and you're doing it for more than 15 minutes. I can tell you, when you onboard an employee, it takes more than 15 minutes to onboard an employee. Now, you could wear a mask, but this would allow us the ability to do a lot of this remotely and get us basically into the 21st century like a lot of other companies throughout the United States as to how they onboard employees. Next is the City Hall Entrance Remodel for Restricted Access. It's a $90,000 expenditure. This would basically be a addition of a wall out here in our lobby where we could restrict access at all times to prevent individuals from just walking in at any given time. We would have the ability to have someone buzz someone in. There would be a desk and someone manning that during business hours, gives us the ability to check temperature. If someone has a high temperature, they don't get in. Otherwise, right now, if those doors are open and someone is sick, they can come in here, use our restroom, and expose employees here in City Hall of COVID-19. One of the most important things that I added at the last minute, really, I added it on July 16th, was after we learned of, we had several police officers that day had COVID. I can tell you, based on having eight, seven police officers out in the dispatcher, our overtime budgets are going to be depleted relatively quickly, especially if we're in this pandemic for an extended period of time. So I've added $25,000 to Police, Fire, the Sheriff's Office, and Solid Waste Disposal and Collections. These are departments that have to run basically 24/7. Not necessarily disposal and collection, but they have to run five days a week, disposal and collections. They have to keep the trash up out of the city, and they have to keep the landfill operating. So I've asked for $100,000 there. So that is all of the funding requests of all the departments throughout the city. As I said previously, it leaves approximately $200,000 left for City Council to allocate further if they so desire. So tonight, we would have a council approval with supplemental appropriation in order to begin project spending. That's what you have before you tonight. It's the next agenda item or the one following. Additional funds coming from the state, I previously mentioned that, that Secretary Aubrey Lane sent me an email, I think at 5:58 PM tonight, advising us that we do have the ability to access more COVID funding. And, you know, the other question is, what can we do with some of these $200,000 in funds? Schools, I know Dr. Perigin has asked for additional funding to help deal with the pandemic, additional small business grants in addition to the $100,000 that I've previously put in this plan, and then three outside agencies. I know that there are outside agencies that desperately need assistance during this time as funding sources have dried up. The ability to promote their businesses, whether it's BCM or whether it's CVB, has had an impact, so there is an opportunity that council, if they so chose, could fund outside agencies with these funds. So I'll answer any questions anyone has at this time.
I do have a question. So like, for instance, here on the first page or on the first slide, if you want to say it that way, for the IT for Meridian Temperature Check kiosks?
Yes.
So you've got a, you've got a column that says anticipated date 9:30. Is that the anticipated date that we would receive the kiosk, or would they be installed and operational by that date, or what is?
Well, we've met with Meridian. I think that's an anticipated date that we would have it. They're very easy. You plug them into the wall and they basically, it's basically an iPad, for lack of a better term. There is some programming that would have to occur. At this point, they are making as many of those as they can because companies and localities across the nation are seeking those devices. We would hope to have them by September 30th, and there's no guarantee that that would happen.
And these are like the infrared scanners, like the?
Yes.
Questions? You know, I think you've done a really good job of looking at a lot of things, a lot of areas. I mean, when I think back just to what Dr. Shelton was talking about, about how you mitigate some of this, both from people that would come in the building, people that work in the building, I mean, you can see that throughout this. You know, to me, particularly knowing, you know, some of this, I look at, because you've made it easier to continue the work through remote access, cleaning supplies, you know, some areas probably that could be, and as you mentioned, I know, you know, the overtime, I don't know, I mean, if you feel that's adequate. Again, going forward, if there's additional state funds, we could draw those down later. But also some of the businesses, you know, again, I think everyone wants to help business get back on their feet as much as possible, so that may be another area. And also, the outside agencies, particularly the tourism, because I think, you know, some of these businesses have been hardest-hit, have been hotels and restaurants and things that have relied on people not necessarily living in the city. And when you look at the budget we passed, the biggest drop-off in revenues from the city's standpoint was meals tax and lodging tax. So, you know, anything we can do to try to help bring that back and bring that back quickly, I think we can see a good return on, so.
May I? Is it appropriate to ask a question, Mayor? I'm sorry, I don't know. May I ask?
Sure, I mean, if you?
Can some of this money be used? Now, based on what the mayor just said, you know, he's talking about tourism and hotels and all that sort of stuff. I'm thinking about the people who live in this city and the fact that we are losing population every year, and that means we're losing income every year. Now, my question is this, is there some way that some of this money, because of the fact that we are losing and people are not driving and so forth, can some of this money be used to help us pay our bills?
No, ma'am. There's, it has to meet three criteria, and that's set out by federal law, so we have to follow that. If we don't follow?
I can see that.
I'll read it to you.
Okay.
If, if we don't follow the rules that are set up in the Federal Cares Act, and we will have to pay that back. So, you know, if we go spend money that does not meet these three criteria, which are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID, two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently adopted as of May 27th of 2020, so not the budget we just adopted. This is the budget that we adopted last year. And then three, were incurred during the period that begins on March 1 of 2020 and ends on December 30th of 2020.
All right, thank you for reading that. Now, I'm thinking along the lines of Mr. Windbar and also what you said. Now, in four years, as far as this money that we're getting for our police officers, and Lord knows, I'm all for the police having everything they need, and the firemen and everybody else, but my point is this, in four years, with the money that has been voted on tonight, in four years, the city will either drop that down, and those four employees are no longer there. The city drops the program because there's no more money coming in unless we pick up the tab. Now, what I'm wondering is, in this, some of these things that you have read right here, this is a one-time, not gift, what, grant, whatever.
Well, it's basically a gift.
All right, a gift, all right. Now, when this gift is over, who picks up the tab?
Well, a lot of these items that you see here will be paid for, and there's no more tabs. So it's, you know, these are the items that take, for instance, PPE supplies at the Sheriff's Department. Now, one thing that we have to be cognizant of the fact is, this is a gift. It's going to hopefully get us through the next six to 12 months, and we'll be able to have funds to deal with some of these issues coming up and making sure that we're able to buy PPE equipment. Now, it's what's next, and how long is this pandemic going to last, which then is incumbent on me as a city manager and the CFO and council to make sure that we have the appropriate budgeted amount moving forward so that if this pandemic is not over in the next 12 months or so, that we still have funds available in order to buy the proper PPE equipment, sanitizers, cleaning supplies. Now, for instance, the thermometers, those should work for a number of years, so we shouldn't necessarily have to worry about that for an extended period of time. Same thing with the UV lights. The only thing that we would need to do is replace those lights when they burn out, and I think they have a relatively decent lifespan as far as the lights go, so it's not something that, you know, it's not like a light bulb in your house that you've got to replace every three or six months. Whoops, wrong way. You know, the 55-gallon drums of sanitizer, I can't remember the exact number we're ordering, but it's a significant amount of sanitizer that we would be using and disinfectant, so hopefully that would last us for an extended period of time as well. But these are things that we have to consider as a city moving forward. We're in a different world now.
Well, this is true, but we're also talking about a lot of toys that we're going to have here, a lot of equipment and toys here, and, and my concern is, this is well and good for, let's say, 12 months, for the four years we talked about with the police, and the 12 months, I think that's a figure you've used on this gift here. But now, my concern is, what's next? Now, I have sat here and watched this $108 million debt. We've still got it, you know. It's as bad or worse than the virus. The virus is a damnable thing, and so is that debt. Our debt is as damnable to this city as that virus is. Now, the what next is where the action starts here. What next? Yes, this will help us out, and I'm glad it will. It will help us out for 12 months, fine. What's next? Now, if we can't pay our bills now, which we cannot, if we could, we'd pay that debt. Now, this virus isn't going to go away, folks. It's going to be like the measles and the mumps and the chickenpox and polio. It's just going to be with it for a long time, and we're going to get the effects we're getting. Perhaps the degree will change, but they'll be here. Now, if we're having budgetary problems now, and we use this gift, and that's fine, and we use the four years and all that stuff, what is the what's next that is going to bring this city right back down to its means? It's the what's next, and that's what you all are not looking at. You're not thinking this thing through, fellas. Think it through.
All right.
Don't count on that casino. It isn't even approved. We don't even know the negatives yet. So don't count on spending casino money. We did that with the false. We might have been that foolish right off.
All right.
That brought us $50 billion of debt. So my point is, keep thinking on the what's next. Well, yeah, this will help us through 12 months, wonderful. Then we have that four-year thing. What's next? You're adding to the debt, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Ms. Marnie, I appreciate that, but this is one-time money that must be expended by the end of the year.
It's the same kind of one-time money that tied us $120 million of debt. I was in this room when it was done. I know what I thought.
All right, look, you know?
You're on the same track, the exact same track.
Ms. Marnie, I appreciate your comment, but we're talking, you know, and I think you are right, what's next? And that what's next is the continuing discussions we'll have about revising the budget and the budget next year, but right now, we need to allocate this money and make sure that it gets spent in a way that benefits the community as best as we can.
But don't spend it in a way that it becomes a recurring expense that has to be picked up by the city.
And I appreciate?
I'm a public, remember?
Yeah, Ms. Marnie, and I appreciate that, but most of these things are items that are one-time expenses, other than overtime, which, you know, I don't know that you'd even consider that recurring. Most of these things aren't recurring, and that's the whole point, is this has to be something that can be easily expended.
But if you're out there giving money to these hotels, they should be pulling their own weight. Don't ask me, the citizen, the public, to pay their bills. I don't like it, and that's what you get ready to do. I can see it, it's as clear as anything. Get through one year and say, that's it, it's over.
All right.
And stick to it, because I'm not going to pay it. I'll just take that, I'll just move somewhere else. That'd be very easy. And, and maybe 2,000 other people.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
Yes, sir.
We need, we need?
To the, to the city manager, one question I had, just to clarify, that, that, and the mayor touched on this, so these funds have to be expended by the end of December, or?
We've put a deadline of, I believe, December 7th. That way, we can make sure that the funds are expended.
If we don't use them, essentially, we just?
You lose it.
Have to give them back to the federal government.
That's right.
And I'm sure they'll use it, I'm sure they'll use it appropriately if we give it back.
We can try and find out.
Okay, you mentioned a dollar amount of roughly 200 and some thousand, 200, 13,000 that we haven't discussed, that you did not discuss going through these previous expenses and what is on the agenda for tonight. Has there been much feedback from the section about where small businesses who've been affected by the COVID-19 could apply for some sort of grant? Have we had any inquiries about that? Has work gotten out about that, that that's something that we?
This is, this is the first time this has been public, at least for the city of Bristol. Now, I do know that the chamber has worked with regional partners in developing grants. I believe it's called Region Ahead, and for small businesses to be able to apply for grants during the COVID-19 pandemic, I think it's roughly 150,000 that has been?
260,000.
Okay, so 260,000 has been handed out to local small businesses through Region Ahead. I can tell you, just on one experience that we had as a city, we did receive a grant, I think from the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, it was about $4,500, and it had to be for a specific type of business. It took us two weeks to find someone to take that money. You know? But it took us two weeks to find someone to take that money. So I'm anticipating that there will be businesses that want this money. I do know there's restrictions on how this money can be given out. I do believe there's restrictions if a company has received PPP loans previously, they may not be able to access these funds. So there are things that we have to look at as far as the rules, as to who can qualify for these funds, but I do anticipate there are businesses that do need these funds, and that's one reason we need a support staff through the duration of this program in order to go out and make sure that they're using the money appropriately and we're administering that program appropriately.
On, on your last slide, there were a few items of, of other things, schools, the additional small business grants, and outside agencies. And we don't know yet about additional funds from the state, but have there been other outside agencies that have come to us and asked for additional funding?
Dr. Perigin has asked for additional funding, and I know Discover Bristol has asked for additional funding. I have had a conversation with one of the board members of BCM. They are struggling as, right now, due to the fact of they have basically had to close the museum, and then they're not having rhythm and roots, so they have reached out to me as well.
I just wonder if that would be like an outside agency or almost like a, like a small business-type grant where their income's been affected because of closure?
I think that's something, we'll just have to look at those details to determine.
Can I jump in for a quick second, since we're talking about this last slide here? Additional funds coming from the state. I know back when we were talking about how to use? I know back when we were talking about how to use this initial money to save those jobs, we discussed an additional, I think, 1.4 million that might be coming before December 30th.
Right.
And that would have to be expended by December 30th also?
I would not anticipate it having to be spent by December 30th, but I don't think we have those parameters yet. Literally, I got the email at 5:58, there is a large document to go through it and it may say expended by December 30th, I don't know. I'll have to look. Any other comments or questions? I do know the supplemental appropriation, I don't think it's the next item, but it's the next, it's the following item on the agenda. So that would be if you all choose to approve this.
One thing is the community. I think it's Response Kit and PPE for the community partners. How will that get out to the community? I mean, I think that's really good that we're trying to help get that out to the community, that people that need that. But is there a mechanism or criteria or something for that?
We, we're very lucky to have Melanie Fleener, who takes some of these near and dear to her heart. I know she is working with some of those community partners and would be responsible for getting those out to these community partners. Basically, what we're looking at, what areas of the community may not have the ability to get these supplies relatively quickly? You know, I can think of some of the housing projects. They may just need some of these relatively quickly. Think of Leisure Park Towers. You know, those are the types of places that we're looking. Where can we get these out to someone that needs them quickly in order to protect as many people as possible?
I have one more question. Back on these anticipated dates on the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
This might be a question for you or maybe better suited for the sheriff. On the, on the video conferencing system for inmates talking to their lawyers, that also has September 30th. So if I, if I'm correct on what you told me with the other thing, that would be when it's delivered. So once, once you get that, Sheriff, how long would it take for you to implement that and have it set up and have that as your main means of?
Actually, Rick can probably answer that better if he, yeah, Rick's still here.
I'll take an answer from anybody. I don't care.
Just like everything else, we're really, we'll be ordering these along with other, other localities as well. So the, this product is being sourced by British State Contract through, through state Virginia. So we'll get this as fast as we can, but understand almost every gym out there has got the same idea. So the sooner we get them, the faster we get them.
So once you get them, how long would it take? I mean, it would just be a case then of just setting up the software and the hardware and plugging it in?
They're actually, they're actually totally contained units that they basically require internet and power and that is about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else before we move to the next item? Okay. So we'll move to item number nine, which is supplemental appropriation of $939,826. The staff report, Ms. Bradlin?
Counsel, this agenda item is a supplemental appropriation of $939,826. $870,727 is for items that the city manager just presented for the CARES Act COVID-19 fund. General fund appropriations include a total of $55,579 CARES monies for elections allowable expenses. These funds will be received by the city from the Virginia Department of Elections for COVID-19 expenses in relation to preparing for the upcoming election. This is separate. It is Department of Elections-specific. It is separate from the 1.4 million that Mr. Eads just discussed. Also in the general fund, emergency preparedness, carryover of CARES money that was received through the Public Health and Human Relief Funds. 8,730 of this was received last fiscal year and 476 was expended, leaving a balance of $8,254. Hazardous materials emergency grant money carryover of $5,266. Staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Okay. Any public comment about this? No one signed up, I think. Ms. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mayor Hartley, and members of council. Beth Reinhardt with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce. And wanted to first thank you all for all the work you all have been doing on trying to allocate the CARES Act funding. It is incredibly challenging time for everyone, so we appreciate the efforts that you all have been making and making those final decisions. I want to introduce as well Christopher Perrin, who's our new director at Discover Bristol. And a lot of you all have gotten to know him and were tickled to have him on board. We wanted to specifically ask about, I know it's a public comment, but I've been working with you all diligently since the lodging tax allocation was reduced to us because of COVID. And this is one of those opportunities with some of this additional appropriation being available. It can go to promoting tourism with the intent to support the businesses who have been most drastically hurt by COVID. We know that travel stopped and we are a regional tourism economy here. We, if you look at Chimir Analytics for the job losses impacted most greatly by COVID, four of the top seven are tourism-related. You've got retail, you've got restaurants, you've got hoteliers, you've got arts and entertainment. And those are a big part of our small businesses in this community. The only way we're going to really help them in the most impactful way right now is to get safe visitation back online as quickly as possible. And the way that we're going to do that is we're going to have to have a very strategic plan in place. We're going to have to have monies to be able to implement that plan and to get folks back here safely and to get our businesses back thriving again. They're a critical core part of our, you know, not from just lodging taxes and meals taxes, but just a core part of our community and who we are. So with that, we'd like to just request that you all consider that for an appropriation of funding. We know that that timeline's very short. And in order to get it done, Christopher is a staff of one and be able to do that is challenging without the help of the relic agency plan that we presented to you all.
While you're here, I know you've sent us a lot of information. I guess if anybody has any questions to ask, now would be a good time.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I know we normally do the council discussion after the motion and the second, but I think I have a few questions that may affect that. And Ms. Bradlin, could you help me just refresh my memory about the funding that normally goes to the CVB? I know several years ago, we were, you know, I think 175, 175. Then there was a decrease to, was it maybe 0 or 50? And then there was an increase to 125 and now a decrease to 50. And my memory serves me that the, the funding is kind of like a roller coaster in a way. Is that correct?
It has fluctuated in the last, I've been here three years and it has fluctuated a lot in the last three years.
Yeah, so if you look at the last 20 years of both Bristol, Virginia's contribution from lodging taxes that are paid by people who come here to visit, not paid by us as residents, those lodging taxes, back early on, you know, 20 years ago, Bristol, Virginia paid more of the bulk of those to the CVB than did Bristol, Tennessee. And then for about seven to 10 years, there was an even allocation appropriated by both Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee. And then, to your point, three years ago, they cut us to 50. This body did, not you all sitting here, but we were cut to 50,000 from 175. We went last year to 125. This year, I think originally the budget was set to hope for 150 and because of COVID, it was cut back to 50.
Just thinking out loud, I would imagine it would be hard for any agency to, to plan, have a long-term plan, a three- or five-year plan, if they don't really know what the funding is going to be year to year and it's like a roller coaster every year.
Absolutely. I just want to say a thank you to Randy Eads, but to every single one of you all. We have worked closely and probably add up all the hours on the phone that we've talked with all of you all over the last year, trying to come up with a decent plan that satisfies, satisfies both the city and the needs of the tourism effort that we're all here to do. And we, we hope that we're coming closer to some resolution on that that gives us a more sustainable path long-term. It, it makes more sense. I mean, Christopher spent over 15 years at Bristol Motor Speedway in brand management, marketing, and other areas. And he could tell you way better than I can that, you know, building a long-term strategy, you build bandwidth every year that you're building on something rather than waiting till you know how much you're going to have and putting a plan together just based on that amount of money. You're building that brand of Bristol. People don't come here unless they know we're here to come here. And that's the work that we do at Discover Bristol.
I would just like to say one thing briefly. So, so thank you all for, for giving us a physical copy of this presentation, but also for sending it. And I was, I was able to read it wherever I got it from you. You all do a very good job with sometimes limited resources from us and sometimes foolishness, you know, from both sides of, you know, the town, city councils when we're talking about funding, so, and you know that. But especially in a time like this, when, especially in Bristol, Virginia's case, so much of our money is tied to lodging. You know, so much of, so much of our money that comes in, comes in from people who don't live here. And people are traveling now, as you can see, and a lot of times they're going to, you know, they're going to hotspots when they could be coming someplace that's much more safe and they could remain socially distant, you know, handle the mitigation factors and, and have a good time and be out in nature. You know, so it's, it's very hard to get the word out and we are working on a timeframe here. And, and I will say that, you know, one of the, one of the disappointments from, you know, my year as mayor with this budget that we just passed was that we weren't able to give you an increase and that we had to cut you significantly. And especially there's just an added layer of that now that, that you're trying to help our small businesses and just, you know, stay afloat and get people here. So, so I appreciate you all coming tonight and for giving us this presentation.
So, so just to clarify for anyone watching at home or who may not know, the CVB is basically the, the marketing arm of the city. And, and we make a lot of tax dollars through what Mr. Osborne was saying, lodging taxes, meals taxes, and sales tax. Some of those are from visitors, from tourism. Pretty much all the lodging taxes are from outsiders and a portion of meals and sales tax. So the idea is we, we invest in the CVB each year and they market Bristol. We get that return through a greater amount of tax dollars, which when we have more tourism dollars, we're spending less of our own taxpayer money. Tourism dollars from money coming from outside can help our schools, can help pay for police officers and firefighters. So we just had this discussion about the effects of COVID-19 and this additional CARES Act money that we have that we have to spend by the end of December or we basically have to give it back to the federal government. So you're here telling us that with additional funding to the CVB would help you do your job more effectively and in marketing Bristol and in return, bringing in more tax dollars down the road?
And I'm just going to interject real quick if I can here, Mr. Farnham. And, and I think that what Ms. Reinhardt was saying was specific to COVID-19. Any monies we allocate them from the CARES money cannot be for general, general operations or to fill a revenue gap. It has to be targeted specifically to the work they would do on COVID-19. We just want to make sure we're clear about that.
Right, and I meant to, to say that regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, COVID-19-related.
To offset revenue shortfalls or fill a budget funding gap in any way. It would have to be pretty targeted, I think, I think they address that.
It has to be specifically towards pandemic marketing. And that, the presentation that we gave to you that we're working with an agency is geared specifically for coming out of the pandemic. As you mentioned, people are starting to travel. You're starting to see that more often and outdoor recreation activities is another big component of that. And I think we all understand the beautiful assets that we have in this community. We've certainly been blessed with that. So there's a lot of opportunities to do that and to be ready to be able to market and communicate that folks can come here when that time comes. Everybody is in the same boat. You're hearing that a lot tonight as far as everybody is going to jump at the same opportunity. So you have to be ready, you have to be prepared. And we want to put the city in the best position possible to be able to capitalize on that. When people are ready to get out, they're ready to travel, they're ready to spend some of their discretionary dollars, we want them coming and staying in Bristol. We want them staying in our hotels. We want them going to attractions. We want them going to restaurants, nightlife. That is all an economic driver that's bringing tax money back into the city. It's all being funded from outside visitors. Another piece to consider with that is a lot of folks that are willing to visit would consider moving to a community. That is another piece that we got to build our population back up. Tourism drives a lot of that. Anytime people are willing to move somewhere, they typically have gone and visited and they had a good experience. I feel like we have all the tools necessary. We have a great community, a very hospital community, but we have to get people here. And the only way that we can do that is to make them aware of what opportunities they have and what assets we have for them to come and have a good time. The tourism has to be funded for marketing to go out and to attract people to come and visit us.
I agree completely with what you just said about the people who come to visit and then they end up staying and becoming residents. I'm a real estate agent, I talk to home buyers every day. And it is incredible, the number of people who I have worked with who came to Bristol to visit, maybe visit a friend or maybe just visit for such as a music festival. And then they just fall in love with the region, they stay, they move here, they become taxpayers, their kids go through the school system, and this becomes their home.
One other comment, if I could. You know, there was a reason that the federal government included tourism specifically in the CARES Act monies. And it was based on the data that they were seeing. I mentioned earlier, four of the top seven most impacted job loss-wise sectors of the industry were tourism-related, you know, the restaurants and the hotels and other. And these dollars aren't going directly to those businesses. These are dollars to safely promote and to build our content, creative content, to be able to get people here immediately in the safest manner possible. That's using our outdoor rec assets and things that we know from all the data and research. That's what people are looking to do right now. So it is tied directly. There was a reason that tourism was included for this funding. And again, the lodging taxes that come in, I mean, you all know this well, we talk about it all the time. It comes from people outside this community. That's the beauty of those tourism dollars. It's not taxes on our backs. It's people coming here to visit, spending their money here. And then they go back home or hopefully come and move here or start a business here.
I mean, one thing, and you did make a good point, is it's got to be COVID-related. But right now, the message you would normally tell people about why you would want to come to Bristol and about the attractions and also that it's a safe place to come to visit. I think that, you know, again, that, that has changed a lot as well over what you would normally do. And as Mr. Osborne pointed out, I mean, I know when we looked at the budget, this wasn't something there. You came before and mentioned about the CD, Community Development Block Grant Funds. And I think there were some questions about that because of the low and moderate income and just the fit there. But I think this would qualify. Well, I know it does. You provided that, that, you know, it's a legitimate expense. And I think it could help jumpstart some of these businesses, so.
I think, go ahead. Just to touch on what you were saying, I, I think we don't talk about tourism enough here in the city. And I think we're at a time that we've never seen before with the combination of, and we've talked about it before tonight, even with an upcoming referendum in, on Election Day, which is 98 days away. That and the combination of the COVID-19 pandemic about when people are traveling again, when we are opening back up, this is why you need to come. why you need to come here. You need to make sure we're on the map. It's an important time in our history, past and future, right now, this time that we're in right now, to be marketing and pushing hard to get the word out about Bristol.
May I just one last thing? The urgency of this and the reason for the appeal tonight is knowing that there is a timeframe that you all are committed to in terms of being COVID-related and being spent by December 30th. For that reason, Christopher, and he can tell you more about that, but through a lot of research and the efforts that he's been doing to understand the work during this pandemic, the reason that we chose Relic Agency, which is the presentation that you all received, is they've done this work. They've specifically done pandemic-related recovery, really is what it is, and how you do that. And that was specifically why we engaged with them was because of Christopher's work and finding them. And that's our appeal because we know that there is a timeline to get the completed strategy in our hands in two to three weeks, but we have to build out content. We need professional photography and videography and things that are going to be directly related to the COVID side of drawing people here. And we know that there is, again, a time crunch. Christopher's one person in the CBB, and we need all of the time and partnership with Relic to be able to do that and to deliver you all the best return. I mean, they will deliver a superior product, I can assure you.
So, what is the dollar amount that would help the CBB implement this COVID-related recovery action plan?
Either of us can answer that because we have talked about this ad nauseam, and we've been on calls with Relic and looking at really the, all the different components that you all have in the plan that we presented to you, which is, it's a 10,000-foot plan. It's not the detailed, we're going to spend X number of dollars doing specifically this. That has to be built out in day-to-day conversations over the next two to three weeks to have that comprehensive plan so that we deliver exactly what you all expect of us. So, you know, we feel like $100,000 will certainly satisfy everything that we can and need to do from building content, building the strategy, doing all the marketing buys, whether they're digital, traditional, or other, that will knock the socks off of the travelers who are ready and willing to spend their money here. And, I mean, we've, we've crunched this frontwards and backwards for many weeks as soon as we learned that this might be available to be able to do that efficiently and effectively. You know, the $50,000 we're incredibly grateful for, for that you all allocating that to us, but $50,000 in a year's time, you know, won't even pay a salary and benefits for the most part if you're talking about, you know, a, a true tourism expert who's going to be able to do that. We need money to also build that product, brand, and to get it out there in a marketing manner that makes sense, that's going to support all these businesses, that's going to get us out of this pandemic and make sure that travelers know we're here and going to come and, and visit us and come back many times more, we hope.
Anybody else have any other, here any questions? Okay, we appreciate. We may have some in a minute, but I think for now, it's, appreciate your comments, and we're still in public comments, I guess if anybody else wants to.
Thank you all.
Make a comment.
Thanks for your time.
I'm not public. Can I, can I follow up with one thing?
Yes.
And Mr. Eads touched on this in his presentation. So, what the committee has done to this point, and, and I will tell you that our auditors recommended, because these monies will be subject to single audit because of the threshold, the auditors recommended to their audit clients that we set up a committee and evaluate. So, department requests were sent out to city departments, not a wants list, but a needs list, and what do we need to mitigate COVID-19. There was a dollar threshold and some criteria sent out, and then the department requests came back, and the committee then evaluated and made sure it met the criteria. So, so that has been complete. That is the supplemental appropriation that is before council tonight. My suggestion would be, as Mr. Eads' slide recommended at the end, is now that we are able to consider the schools and the outside agencies and small business grants. So, certainly, Ms. Reinhardt is correct that that is a piece of what the CARES allows. So, now that we've identified the essential city department requests, what do we really need to operate and mitigate the COVID-19 pandemic? Then my suggestion would be that, that those entities submit back through the committee again for a recommendation. And that's not just my suggestion, but our auditors have, have recommended that as well. From the very beginning, I think that was always the plan, wasn't it? And we can do that process quickly.
What would the timeline be for that?
Well, once we get the supplemental appropriation approved, if it gets approved, then tomorrow those departments will get notified of a different PO process they have to follow. And we hope then that we could reach out to the schools and the outside agencies, just like we did with the internal city departments. I would think that we could begin that process in a week, give them a week to get it back, and then evaluate. When Mr. Eads referenced sort of that lag in June, that's what we were doing then. It was sending that information out to departments and getting that evaluated at the committee level.
What was the, what was the exact dollar amount that we have left over? 213,000?
200. Gene's got the slide. I can pull it back up.
213,762, I think.
213,762. With some additional money coming at some undetermined point in the future.
Right. I'll, I'll get that information out tomorrow. So, what I would like to say, you know, Ms. Reinhardt was here tonight in regards to that, you know, based on discussions I've had with her, these funds are needed sooner rather than later. You know, there is a process that we have in place to evaluate these things, but, you know, I just, I think Ms. Reinhardt would reiterate that at least from her standpoint, she needs it sooner rather than later. But at the same time, there is a process in place to evaluate those things based on what the auditor has recommended to us.
And, and most, most localities that I'm aware of are going through that committee-type thing as well, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and this might be a question for you or for the city manager. Was there a letter that was, that was an opinion about these type of funds qualifying for use like this by DMO?
By?
By a destination marketing organization, by DMO?
We have seen several letters, and I think.
Do you want me to pull it up and read it, Ms. Eads? Give me just a second. My computer went to sleep.
But the short answer is there are several documents coming from various government agencies or other agencies, you know, stating that these funds can, are eligible to be given to DMOs.
I think, I think Ms. Reinhardt can answer that question while you're looking for it.
I've got it.
So, the one thing we learned this past week is the state of Tennessee, because they were, they were told and confirmed that these dollars could be used for tourism and for DMOs at the local level. The state of Tennessee is actually allocating about $10 million of their total stimulus monies that they're getting to the state. And that $10 million, they don't have the amount confirmed yet, but their request is for $10 million, will go, some of those dollars will stay at the state tourism office, and some of those dollars will go directly out to DMOs. So, they have already committed that process and confirmed that they can be used for that, if that helps any.
It, it does. Thank you. I will tell you that one of the things that Mr. Eads and I have talked about from the very beginning is making sure that we have the guidance before, before any committee approval of an expenditure. But in the guidance dated July the 8th, may recipients use fund payments to remarket the recipient's convention facilities and tourism industry. Yes, if the costs of such remarketing satisfy the requirements of the CARES Act, expenses incurred to publicize the resumption of activities and steps taken to ensure a safe experience may be needed due to the public health emergency. Expenses related to developing a long-term plan to reposition a recipient's convention and tourism industry and infrastructure would not be incurred due to the public health emergency and therefore may not be covered using payments from the fund. So, we do have some specific guidance, and I think one of the things that they spoke about was how do we get people here safely again? And, and that is covered.
Who was that, who was that letter from specifically?
It is the actual, let me get to the top. I don't want to misquote. It's the federal guidance that came out, and what happened was they must be getting a lot of questions. So, they update the coronavirus relief fund frequently asked questions. They, they keep updating that, which is good because all localities across the nation are asking these same questions.
And that's what, that's what the federal government is, their guidance on it?
And this will be the guidance we, we work off of to, for us to determine internally allowable, non-allowable.
Okay.
And I do want to correct, thanks to Gene, it's 213,37167.
Okay, so, any more comments? Well, I guess what's the pleasure of council?
I would like to make a motion that we approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of 939-826 for items discussed by the CFO and an additional $100,000 from the CARES Act money specifically for pandemic marketing to Discover Bristol for a total of $1,039,826.
Mr. Osborne, can I, I will tell you that we can only amend our budget. I was, I'm sorry, I didn't see this coming, or I would have, I would have addressed this earlier. We can only amend our budget by 1% without a public hearing and going over the $1 million. I have a concern that that might be above the 1%. I, I haven't checked that, but, but I just want to tell you that you can only amend it. Yes, so I'm afraid 1,039, I can check it right now, but I wasn't expecting that. So, let me look before you, because we've got to operate within the law.
It'd be helpful, yeah.
I apologize for the delay. Just one second.
Please take your time and make sure you get it right.
I wasn't expecting an addition to that. No, it would. We can only adjust by 1,016,000. So, that puts us over the threshold. And once again, I apologize. If I had known this discussion was going, taking place, I would have had that information to you.
So, could we, let me do my math here, excuse me. How much can we, 1,016,000? So, if we, if we were to appropriate up to that amount, we would be okay?
I guess legally you can.
Gentlemen, what I would suggest, if, if it is the pleasure of three of you, approve the 939-826, and then we could have a called meeting later this week to discuss this in further detail, if that's, if that's something.
That's fine with me. So, I withdraw my motion.
I think that's the first time we've ever gotten a withdrawal of a motion 100% correct, so thank you.
So, can I make a new motion that we just approved the supplemental appropriation as presented with an intent to meet on the $100,000 this week?
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation as presented in the amount of $939,826, and a second with the intent to have a called meeting to further discuss the tourism funding. Any discussion on the motion? Well, we'll say not only do we probably need to discuss the CARES Act funding, because I know, again, that's something that's been discussed, but we probably, maybe not at the called meeting, but definitely probably the next meeting, need to have a broader discussion about how we fund tourism in general. It's, you know, right before the pandemic, we had a joint work session with Bristol, Tennessee, and Rita McClenni, the, the CEO of Virginia Tourism Corporation, came and talked about tourism and its, its importance to, to communities across the Commonwealth. And, and there was a lot of discussion about what that should look like. And then because of a, everything that has happened since then, we never really had that discussion. And I, it just seems like that's one of those things that I don't know that we can continue to, to put off, that we probably need to have that discussion. I know our counterparts in Tennessee have been wanting to, you know, they've had some discussions as well about tourism and how it looks. So, we need to, to have a discussion on our side, and then we can maybe move forward together as a community. All right, if there's no further discussion, then we will ask Clerk Caldwell?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number 10, Amendment to the Emergency Ordinance 20-1, Stafford Point.
Counsel, you have before you tonight, this is an ordinance that we have previously passed on two previous occasions in order to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. The current ordinance expires, I think today, believe it or not. Let's see. Yes, today. So, what we need to do if you desire to operate under the emergency ordinance that allows council members and staff to continue to meet remotely, is approve the ordinance and amend it for an additional 60 days. Now, with this amendment, at this time, this would be the final amendment that you could have. Our ordinance restricts us to six months, so this amendment would conclude on September the 26th of 2020. Yes?
I think the original ordinance ended on, it's the, it's the last day of the month. We're extending from the original expiration date, so it's, it's actually going to be September 30th, I think.
Okay. So, we would amend it to expire on September the 30th of 2020 instead of September 26th, and that's correct when you read the ordinance. You know, we've, for the most part, everyone's been able to attend meetings in person. There's no guarantee that that could continue in the future, but it's up to you all's pleasures to how you want to move forward with it. I'm fine either way.
Okay. Any questions, I guess, for your comment?
I was just going to ask, it's a 60-day extension?
We would extend, it's a little more than 60 days. We'd extend it to September 30th.
Okay. Is that 60? Is that set? It, since this is the last time it can be extended, does it have to be 60, or could we choose?
No, the, the ordinance can be in effect no longer than six months.
Okay.
So, six months from March 30th would be September 30th.
Okay.
So, what would happen if, you know, as Dr. Shelton said 11 hours ago when we were hearing from her, what happens if things get a lot worse? And then this ordinance expires, then we're legally required to?
Continue to conduct meetings. I believe that, from my understanding, there are things being processed in the special session that may alleviate some of these issues that we have as far as meeting remotely. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but I do know there has been talk about it. I have gone back and reviewed some of these statutes. I do believe that there's probably, I would have legal ground if necessary that we could continue to operate. I would have legal ground, if necessary, that we could continue to operate remotely if absolutely necessary, because at the moment, I have not rescinded the state of emergency that the city is currently in, that I originally issued back in March.
Any public comment? Nobody signed up, so do we have a, what's the pleasure, I guess, what's the pleasure of council?
I move to approve the extension of the emergency ordinance.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, Councilman Osborne, second by Vice Mayor Farnum, any discussion?
Yeah, I might understand that correct, on those statements that we can not pass this again right now on this extension and bring it back at a later date if we need to, if things do continue to get worse.
You could.
We could table it tonight, or whatever, and then at a later date, if this Corona crap keeps growing, then we could bring it back and enact it again for another timeline.
Yes, sir.
But this is the last and final.
As the way it's written right now, that's correct, so if you, if you extend it now, and I mean, just real-life example, if this was not in effect, Mr. Mumpower would not be able to call in and participate telephonically, so, you know, that's, that's a consideration.
In theory, we could need this in effect for the, the next council meeting in a few weeks.
You could do what?
We would, may need it in effect for the next council meeting, for instance.
You may, and you may not. I, I think what Mr. Wingard's going at is, what happens if it gets worse and we used this last time, was let's say it gets worse in November, and for whatever reason, we don't have another mechanism to meet remotely if we need to, and I think that's what he's referring to.
Absolutely, there's something that nobody has even mentioned.
You know, and, and I mean, we've already heard Dr. Shelton say that the spike is projected, at least in southwest Virginia, mid-September, that could occur a little sooner, it could occur a little later, I mean, no one knows when that spike would occur.
And that is the projected, what they think may be the possible spike, and what time of the year is that? It's flu season. So if we got a coronavirus at the same time we got the flu going around, it's really going to get ugly.
Besides the fact that we can meet remotely, what else does this ordinance allow us that we?
Well, basically what it allows is allows the Planning Commission, the IDA, to also meet remotely, and, I mean, that's the purpose of this ordinance, was to allow for remote meetings if necessary. Now, with that being said, you know, the majority, the supermajority of council has met in person since mid-March, and, you know, we've been fortunate in the fact that I haven't had to have three of you quarantined or something of that nature, but that doesn't mean that that wouldn't happen in the future.
And without the General Assembly taking action, this is, I mean?
I've gone back and looked at the statutes that pertain to this, I do believe that if, if absolutely necessary, we would have legal standing to meet remotely if we absolutely had to, if we did not have this ordinance. It's not necessarily something that I necessarily want to test, but I do think I could make an argument that we could meet.
When does the General, is it?
August 18th.
Yeah, so that, we waited to see what they would do, that'd be a month out of two, so you'd only have about 30 days left.
Do what?
The governor called the legislature back in, so it's in the late?
No, it's August 18th, August 18th.
No, it's August 18th. He called them back in.
I'm going to our resident expert on the news, it's, it's August, it's August 18th.
August, that's one year, because the governor's called them back in for an extra session.
All right.
We do have, once this emergency ordinance expires, under state law, we could still have a fully electronic meeting, as long as it, as long as it is for purposes of addressing the current, current emergency.
The emergency, right. So we couldn't have just a regular meeting like we have had tonight, but if we had to have a fully electronic meeting, I mean, heaven forbid, we had 2,000 residents in the city that contracted coronavirus, and we had to meet in order to deal with that situation, we could have the electronic meeting for that purpose, but for that purpose only.
Okay, so my only question was, you know, like, a worst-case scenario situation like you just described, and several of us can't meet, if we didn't extend it right now before our next meeting, which is, I think, August the 11th, you know, what would we do for that meeting, if, at least, well, any of us couldn't meet?
Well, if none of you could meet, for whatever reason, we wouldn't have a meeting. But, you know, I've still got to have a majority, whether it's electronically or whether it's in person, so I'd still have to have three of you in order to have a meeting, otherwise two of us get together and have coffee and donuts. But, you know, to get to the crux of your question, I do believe there's potential legal footing that we could meet, as I said, I don't necessarily want to test that, but I, I think we could do it if we had to.
But the safer side of it is to postpone it, and let's see how things get.
Do you have any sense what other localities in the Commonwealth are doing? I mean, they adopted something very similar around the same time we did.
Everybody in the locale, everybody in the Commonwealth basically adopted the same ordinance, you know, late March, early April, and I do know some of the localities around here have extended it, I don't think every locality has. You know, I don't want to put a percentage on the localities across the Commonwealth that have extended it, my guess is probably your localities in northern Virginia and eastern part of Virginia have extended it, just due to the number of cases they have, and my guess is probably anything on the west side of Afton Mountain may not have extended it.
Or, wait a minute, do we have any?
I mean, I think there's been two motions, you can, you know, if you vote it down tonight, we can always potentially bring it back at the August meeting, or someone, or if someone wants a withdrawal.
My batting average is going down here if I withdraw this one, too.
So if I didn't understand correctly, we have statutory limitations, six months ago?
That's correct.
So the question is, do we let the current declaration expire, and then we can bring it back up again two months later, which, if we say, wait two months, then we start getting really bad, then we might go into that year, versus extending now, and it, it runs through then sometime?
Right.
Six months every calendar year, or six months every fiscal year?
I would have to double, typically the law counts calendar year, not necessarily fiscal, fiscal year.
I, I feel uncomfortable, basically, I know what, I know what we're trying to do, we're trying to hold it until the, till the correct moment, is what the question is, you know, save, save it for when it gets real bad.
Well, I mean, I don't think anybody knows when the correct moment is, I mean, to your point.
Right, and I mean, you, you heard Dr. Shelton say September is when, when the peak is going to happen, but it could be completely wrong, and the peak could be in November, we, we don't know, or the peak could be two weeks from now, I don't, that's the thing.
I mean, nobody knows.
I'm worried about holding it for, for the right moment, and then, then it's too late, and then Councilman Mumpower's out again, Anthony goes to Myrtle Beach, and I get coronavirus, and then we're all out.
If we intend on having a called meeting this week, I can do a little more further research to see what other localities are doing, you can postpone this until whenever we have the called meeting, I'm anticipating the Thursday meeting, and I can give you a little more information as to what may be the proper thing to do, and we can put it back on the agenda for Thursday.
Would I need to withdraw my motion, make a second motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Wait, hold on.
No?
You need a consensus from the rest of council to withdraw your motion.
Do I even work here?
I'm okay with, with that withdrawal.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Councilman Mumpower?
Okay.
Okay, I withdraw my motion, and I make a move, make a, make a motion that we table item 10 until no later than Friday of this week.
Postpone.
Postpone item 10 until no later than Friday.
Yeah, do you even work here?
I don't, I've just been showing up for months, I don't know what I'm doing here.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to postpone the item to, to the end of the week, no later than Friday.
Second.
We have a second, now that we have any discussion. All right, hearing none, Clerk Colerole?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right, item number 11, appointments to the Planning Commission. First off, I'd like to thank everyone that, that applied to the Planning Commission, we appreciate that, we appreciate the people that are willing to serve, and I guess, what's the pleasure of the council?
Okay, let me be, let me be clear on this, I don't withdraw this one. I make a motion that we appoint, there are two open seats, I make a motion that we appoint Daniel Schu for the term ending June 30th, 2024, and Ed Harlow for the term ending June 30th, 2023.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Clerk Colerole?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Okay, item E, ordinances, first reading, first reading of an ordinance to vacate all or a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol, near Planet Fitness. Staff report.
Counsel, we've had the public hearing on this matter tonight, we would just reiterate what was previously stated about vacating a portion of the right-of-way in the, I will call it the Planet Fitness entrance slash parking lot.
Any comment from the public? Do we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance by caption only?
Counsel, we actually, on an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken?
Had to read the whole thing?
I think on that first one, I think we need to read the whole thing.
So motion for the first reading of the ordinance, and we have it.
I move that we have the reading, first reading of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Clerk Colerole?
I have a question.
Sorry.
I've been under the impression that Vice Mayor can't make a motion, nor the mayor, am I wrong on that?
The mayor can't make a motion.
The mayor.
The Vice Mayor made, I was asking for a motion, he didn't make the motion. Councilman Farnum made the motion.
Okay, all right, okay, I stand corrected.
No, because I was asking for a motion for a first reading, and then I.
Okay. It's getting late.
I know. I agree. Okay, so Clerk Colerole?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yeah.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way, whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia desires to vacate a portion of an improved right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia, more particularly described as follows, just for clarification, Mr. Mumpower just called me on my cell phone, he may have gotten cut off.
Conference call, timed out.
Oh, we need to shorten our meetings, huh? Approximately 260 square feet of right-of-way near the northeast corner of parcel number 226 hyphen 4 hyphen 26, and approximately 1,559 square feet of right-of-way near the southwest corner of parcel number 226 hyphen 4 hyphen 27, whereas the vacating of said right-of-way has been advertised in a public hearing held, all in compliance with section 15.2 hyphen 2006 of the 1950 Code of Virginia, as amended, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia described above should be and hereby is vacated, and be it further ordained that this clerk of the city shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded among the land records in the office of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol as required by law.
Item E2, first reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol, near the Commonwealth Center, staff report.
Counsel, once again, this is just to follow up with the previous public hearing we had tonight, in regards to vacating a small right-of-way at the corner of Vernon Street, it's also known as Lindy Alley, it's near Commonwealth Avenue and Arlington.
Okay, any public comment? All right, do I have a motion for first reading of the ordinance?
I move for first reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnum, any discussion? Colerole?
Farnum.
Well, let me, let me say something here, I have to abstain to this, abstain from this because of the potential conflict of interest, I own property too close to this, the neighbor that is going to inherit this, I have, I join property lines with him, so I will abstain.
Kevin, Mr. Mumpower, I don't know if you heard, but Mr. Wingard's going to abstain due to the fact that he owns property that joins the person that I think, that will inherit the property, is that what you said? Yes.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, sharing that. Okay, Clerk Colerole?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Hartley?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way, whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia desires to vacate a portion of a right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia, more particularly described as follows, that portion of Lindy Alley to the west of Vernon Street, bounded by parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 6 to the north, city of Bristol, Virginia Vernon Street right-of-way to the east, parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 2, and 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 1 to the south, and parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 68 to the west, whereas the vacating said right-of-way has been advertised in a public hearing held, all in compliance with section 15.2 hyphen 2006 of the 1950 Code of Virginia, as amended, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia described above should be and hereby is vacated, and be it further ordained that the clerk of the city shall cause a certified copy of this ordinance to be recorded among the land records in the office of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol as required by law.
All right, finally, the consent agenda.
Wrong consent agenda now, Kevin.
Do you need to pull the 7-1 out of the meeting minutes?
Mr. Mumpower suggests pulling the meeting minutes out on 7-1 because he needs to abstain.
Okay, do I have a motion to pull out the, or, I guess, have a motion to approve all the items except for the minutes on 7-1?
I make a motion to approve all items, the consent agenda, except for the minutes for the July 1st meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Clerk Colerole?
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower?
Which, which maybe is this?
You're, you're good for this one.
You're good to vote on this one. Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Okay, now do we have a, a motion to approve the minutes of July 1?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 1st meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Clerk Colerole?
And I just want to clarify, there's two sets of minutes for July 1st.
That's correct.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Abstain.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
No further business, we stand adjourned. Enough other business, we stand adjourned.